Just so everybody knows, we'll be starting the meeting in two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you Director Dressley.
Here.
Director Tate.
Here.
Director Hadeen here. Director Beisel absent. Director Malm.
Here.
Chair Davis.
Here. Thank you. The stand, please remove your caps for your pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's on the way.
Is she? I need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I actually moved to amend the meeting minutes.
Okay, once we have a motion and a second, then we can talk about that. So again, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now discussion, Director Tate.
There was just one note when it came to request for future meeting topics. And one of them is mine. And I would just like to request that it be updated. Right now, it says the request was when to consult school legal counsel versus MSBA and the process for this. I'd like to amend it to include at the end and the process for communication back to all board members.
Are you talking about the agenda or the minutes?
The minutes. When we had agenda topic requests, at the bottom of the minutes.
I understand, my understanding of the current... My understanding in the current motion is approving the agenda.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Yeah, sorry. We'll get to the minutes in two seconds. Yes, Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I would ask that the agenda be modified and that the item on non-contract hourly rates be removed from consent. That's an item that I feel like I need to abstain from. But I would like to participate in the vote for the consent agenda. So I'd like to see that as a modification of the agenda as published.
Noted. Let the record reflect to Director Beisel is here and present at the table. We will now move to approval of the agenda with that... Oh, sorry, Director Tate, I apologize.
I actually, I have a few requests to remove from the consent agenda as well. Let me scroll down there real quick.
One second, Director Tate. We do need a second for Lisa's motion on removing the hourly component from the consent agenda. Do I have a second on that?
Seconded.
All right, with it being seconded, we will vote on that piece first. Then we'll move on to Director Tate's amendments. All those in favor of moving the hourly component out of the consent agenda so it can be dealt with separately, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. We will move that off outside the consent agenda. All right, Director Tate, you're on.
I would like to remove policies 509, 532, 613, and 522 from the consent agenda. And I didn't get a chance to look was, I believe it was 602 was duplicated. Was that removed from the consent and put into the second reading? Okay, it was, okay. So yes, it's those four. 509, 532, 613, and 522.
Director Tate, you're pulling those for individual conversation, is that correct? Is that...
Correct. Yes.
In order to pull those, I need a second to that, and then we need to vote. And we can do it in group, or we can do it one by one?
Seconded.
All right, with a first and a second to pull those four, per their numbers that we just discussed, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Keep your hands up, please, I need to see. Okay, that's three. All those opposed? Two. Three. Yeah, I know. I was counting up everybody but me. I haven't gotten to me yet. The vote is three to three, so I believe that because we do not have a seventh right now, that that motion fails. Am I correcting that? Yes, Director Tate.
I'm sorry, I have some concerns about legal references and such in these policies. And I'm concerned about them being voted on without that discussion. So perhaps I should have made that clear, but that's what they're related to.
Clarification?
That I'm not comfortable voting for them in their current state without discussion.
Got it. Okay, so... I'm just reviewing them really quick, Director Tate, to see which ones these were. 509, 32, okay. 613. Red requirements. All right. Based on Director Tate's clarification, I'm okay discussing them. So my vote becomes a yes, which makes it four to two. Likewise, five to one. Okay, those will be added. Thank you for the clarification, Director Tate. Anything else in terms of the agenda before we move to, before we approve it? All right, so I need, so we voted for Director Hadeen's and Director Tate's. So now we just need to approve the agenda, or have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So I need a motion for that in a second.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor of the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we will move to the minutes of the last meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, first and a second.
So moved.
Second.
With that, now Director Tate, you had something in terms of those minutes, and now you can move back to that.
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
So yes, there was one of the requests for future agenda topics. I would like to amend it. Currently, it states when to consult school legal counsel versus MSBA and the process for this. I would like to amend that to include that portion, but add at the end and the process for communication back to all board members. So there are two parts of that request.
So you're adding, it sounds like you're adding some verbiage to the backend.
Yes.
You recall that that's what you, how you worded it initially? Or is this adding to what you had?
No, this was my request. It was a two-part request that we understand the process for going to which entity, and then how do board members get that message back?
Okay, so either way, with the addition of the verbiage, what we'll do then is I just, we just need to vote on whether the verbiage can be added to the minutes or not. It's as simple as that. It's as simple as making a motion, a second, and then voting on the addition of that verbiage. So in terms of addition of the verbiage, Director Tate just laid out. I need a first and a second, and then we can vote on it. Well, she made, that's true, she made the motion. Somebody needs a second, Director Tate's motion.
Second.
All right, then let's just vote on this, and then we can either add it or not. All those in favor of adding the verbiage as per Director Tate, please signify by saying aye. One, two, three. Those opposed adding the verbiage.
I don't have it in my notes.
I can, I'll make a request later tonight to include both parts. That works.
Either way, it's fine. All right, then we do not have the, we just need to vote on the minutes as they were, as we will cover that later in the evening then. So all those favor of the minutes as they were last meeting, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
For clarification, was the, I understood the motion was for both the regular board meeting and the special board meeting? It wasn't just the minutes from last meeting?
It was the minutes from... Thank you for the clarification. I thought it was just the minutes from last meeting, but they're both on here. So since I mentioned the last meeting, then I'll just ask for a first and a second on the special board meeting as well, for those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Need a discussion on the special board meeting specifically. All in favor of the minutes of special board meeting by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that clarification, Director Hadeen. At this time, I'd like to recognize and thank all of our visitors, both here and online watching. Thank you for participation and listening in on our business here. I will now, are you fixing your... Oh, okay, sorry, Director Hadeen. I will move on to announcements or recognitions with Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. First, I would like to bring up Mike Slavik, Abby Myers, and Craig Beisel from the Hastings Rotary. They would like to speak to all of you and share with you some good news about our student volunteers, particularly as of recent, the Rivertown Live event.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, Superintendent McDowell. My name is Mike Slavik, president of the Hastings Area Rotary Club. And we just want to be here first of all, I am with fellow Rotarians Abby Myers, Craig Beisel. Actually Superintendent McDowell is also a Rotarian. And Bruce Karnick in the back hiding there is also a Rotarian of our small, about 35-member club. And we've had a long history of supporting not only the Hastings community, but also Hastings Public Schools. And before we talk a little bit about the great work that our student athletes did over the last couple of weeks, I want to introduce Abby Myers to kind of talk a little bit about some of the partnerships we have that we do with the school district.
I get the privilege of working with the high school. We present monthly scholarships starting in October to students from the high school senior. They're selected by, nominated by the teachers and staff, and then selected by their committee. And I get the benefit of presenting those and coordinating that with those students. So it's really fun to be able to give back in that way, and we're just excited to have that program.
So our student of the month has been something that we've been doing for 20-plus years with the club, in addition to some scholarships with the scholarship program that we've done. And as a whole, the Rotary Club has been able to give almost $1 million to the community and public schools since its founding. And one of the big things that people notice is our Rotary Roses, our flowers. Over the years, we've helped with Rivertown Days. But as of late, it's the Hastings Rivertown Live, the concert that we do down at the riverfront every September. And the proceeds of that is able to go in and support our community and our schools. So Craig Beisel's had the opportunity to be, at the luxury of it, be our volunteer coordinator the last couple of years and tell a little bit of that story.
It's a real luxury. I'll sit down, because I'll talk a little bit longer. Again, thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. Again, my name is Craig Beisel. I'm a member of the Hastings Rotary Club. I did my best to take as many pictures as I could during our event this week, or during our event on September 10th. I've asked Bob to present these pictures as I speak. Feel free to follow along as I tell my story. This year, I sat on our community to put this event on with my focus being recruiting volunteers for the entire weekend. Our event had roughly 90 adult volunteers and an additional 40 to 50 student athletes and coaches who chipped in. Trent Hanson, the athletic director, was extremely successful with backfilling our deeds with additional volunteers. I'd like to extend a special thanks to school board members Carrie Tate and Lisa Hadeen and Superintendent Bob McDowell, who were also in attendance to help with our volunteering. Last year was our trial year with reaching out to Trent Hanson and the athletic department to help us fill in the gaps with needed help. Much like last year, this year was, I was able to work closely with Trent to assist with obtaining needed assistance. Thank you so much to the following coaches and parents who chipped in to make this community event happen. We had girls tennis coach Marissa Welch and her eight student athletes, cross-country coach Joe Rebey and his eight student athletes, girl soccer coach Paul Armstrong and his student, his 10 student athletes, boy soccer coach Tom Brenney and his 12 student athletes, and football coaches Dana Strain and Pete McGinnis with their 20-plus football players. Not to be outdone, Trent was able to recruit eight additional coaches and family as we were short ushers. Thank you Jamie Swanson, the boy soccer coach, Kate McAlpine, the girl swimming coach, Brian Wilson, the boys... We'll get into that. We'll get into that one. Brian Wilson, the boy soccer coach, Jerry McAlpine, the boy swim coach, and Jerry Rupp, who's a Hastings swim coach. Some background info from this year's event. Organizing with our bands, staging crews, lighting crews, et cetera, was a challenge. This year, our committee was given times for arrival, setup, takedown, et cetera, that required help. All this information was immediately shared with Trent. Upon receiving schedules, Trent was quick to work and help with reaching out to coaches. What should have been learned from prior year, receiving a schedule of plans is merely a suggestion. We had crews drop off equipment early, crews that weren't clear with what their expectations were, crews that were not easy to work with, crews who didn't have enough help. Luckily, I had Trent in my back pocket to fill in with help with some amazing athletes and coaches. Our committee received many compliments on how well organized we were and all the help that we provided. If it wasn't for the athletic department of the Hastings High School, we would not have been able to handle many of the curveballs that were sent our way. The hard work and attitudes portrayed by the athletes and coaches was highly noted by many of the crews. Some of the standout stories from this year included some of the athletes meeting and getting pictures with Foghat and the Guess Who, albeit none of them had any clue who these national acts were. And some athletes perhaps learned a little bit about electricity and the cost of some of this equipment. There were athletes and coaches on stage helping the national acts move their equipment before, after, and in-between performances. They all got a taste of what it's like to serve in a community and volunteer. I would like to think one of the fondest memories from one of the athletes was created with Ian Pepple. If you haven't seen the video on Facebook, I'd be happy to share it with you. Mr. Pepple was faced with a little wrestling challenge following the teardown work on Sunday from yours truly. Needless to say, Mr. Pepple reminded me that I don't have what it takes to live up to the strength and ability of a standout high school football player and wrestler. The athletes and coaches will remember our event and being a part of something so awesome. I, for one, really enjoyed partnering with Trent and interacting with all the coaches and athletes. Our event does indeed raise money that is invested back into various programs throughout our community, including our scholarship program. As some of you are aware, some of the money goes in, excuse me, some of the money does indeed go back into our scholarship program. Yes, our event makes money, but at the same time, the amount of funds raised perhaps doesn't compare to the positive impact this event has on this community. The athletes who helped out during the event showed much respect to our bands, crew members, other volunteers, guests, their coaches, and myself. I thought last year was a success with how it all worked out in partnering with the athletic department. This year, it was even better. The entire interaction with the Hastings Athletic Department was amazing. The help from Trent Hanson in coordinating times with the various coaches and teams made much of my responsibilities flow smoothly. The patience and hard work from everyone was amazing. I have received various communications from many members of the community, letting me know how impressed they were with how we had coordinated and involved the high school. I took a lot of credit with pulling off a smooth event when a lot of the recognition should be given to the Hastings Athletic Department, the coaches, and all the athletes who chipped in with positive attitudes and smiling faces. The Hastings schools should be proud for the work and time the athletes put in. They were a part of something bigger than they can imagine. Thanks to Trent and his connections, the Hastings Rotary Club was able to put on an awesome community event. The Rotary Club looks forward to more events that will involve needed help, much like the assistance received for Rivertown Live. To sum up this entire event, I was quoted, apparently, in the Hastings Journal with the following comment: "How cool is it that we have high school teams here to help with whatever we need?" Thank you.
And we first wanted to say thank you to staff, coaches, and our students and student athletes for that. And I think they certainly deserve a round of applause for that. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, in addition to the funds that are raised in here, we actually made the decision as a committee of Rivertown Live to put in the budget, some funds to help support Hastings schools in addition to the profits that are generated, and have made, put a line item in here to dedicate some funds to be used to help out for student activity fees for students who can't afford the costs that are going in here. So on behalf of the Rotary Club and its 35 members, we have a check. We'll do this for $1,500 to the Hastings School District for the cost of those fees and students. So with that, congratulations. For those in the audience, it looks like this. So we'll hand that to you, and we have the real check too, which is much smaller. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
First of all, all of you, thank you so much for all of your hard work. It's greatly appreciated, everything you've done, just to get that event going and the way you utilize just our amazing, amazing coaches and kids, staff. That way is fabulous, is what the community is all about. Thank you so much for the donation. That's an amazing gift to a lot of kids that potentially find these fees out of reach. So thank you for that as well. Does anybody else have any questions for these folks? Or any comments?
If not, thank you very much. Yes?
I think Jessica? Director Dressley? There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you again, very much.
All right, I do have a second good news, and a little bit different good news. We have a gentleman who's been with the district for quite some time and is retiring. And I'd like to bring up Renee Sterno. Renee is the proud owner, founder of Sterno and Associates. And he's been, like I said, been with us for a very long time, providing supports for our students, for our students' families, for our staff, our staff families. And he has, like some of our staff, decided that it's time to do different things. But as he's going to share in a moment, he's left us in good hands, and we will continue our partnership with Sterno and Associates. So Renee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I realized, as I was sitting over there, I've been here 40 years. It was a model that was developed at a place called Johnson Institute around chemical dependency. And my, the idea was to bring in an expertise into the school system to help with employees, families, and students in looking at both chemical health and mental health issues. And we've been kind of in the shadows for 40 years where we step in, do our work, get people to help, and then leave quietly. So we're kind of a ghost system. And what I realized is that there are four superintendents and four interim superintendents. And each one of them comes in and says something, not unlike Bob, what are we doing with Sterno and Associates? Until things start to happen, and then things become more evident. And have really appreciated over all those years and all the people that have served on this board over all that time that has supported what we do with students, with employees, with families. I can't tell you how grateful I am for the support and the partnership and the trust that has been built over all this time. It's an amazing gift. The other thing is that many times I would come to the board meetings and sort of, people would add... would ask, what's coming? What do you see happening? And one of the things that I see happening, and I've talked with Bob, is that when I first started, I used to say, this is a school. This is what we're about is education, and mental health has to happen somewhere else, in therapy offices, in doctors' offices, in psychiatrists. And I've kind of evolved into something different, that the pressures on families, on kids, are increasing exponentially, not just because of the pandemic, which had its own issues, but the rise in anxiety, depression is just phenomenally high, and it's only going to get worse. There's less support in the systems, and that even though Sterno and Associates will still be a part of things, and my associate Amy Brown wasn't able to be here yet, but we'll introduce her to you. She has a real depth in trauma, adolescents, adults, families, chem depth, a lot of the things that are unique in my background and in the other people that have worked with me over all the years. But I think that the idea that we're going to need a much stronger mental health presence in the schools in order to serve what's going to happen. There's less support for kids, there are more single-family that need to work, that need to provide, and the need for kids and their sense of well-being, not only is education in terms of their ability to perform and get things done, but also their mental health stuff. When I was a young man, one of my first jobs, there was an HR person that said, you know, Renee, what we want you to do is leave your personal life at home and bring only your work-life in. And I looked at her and I said, I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to bring what's happening at home, whether good, bad, or indifferent, and separate that from work. And that's true for kids. The amount of chemical issues that are in the community are just enormous. We just lost another kid just a little while ago, and it will only continue to escalate. And that's why the need for more and more mental health issues within high accessibility for kids and families in the schools, because that's where they are. And rather than the number of times that people will say, I can't take the time off of work to get my student to a therapist, that somehow we do that, and that the amount of work has been exponentially increasing. When I first started, I literally on Wednesdays would call and say, is there anybody that you need me to see? And many times, the answer was no. Now, Amy, I think, is almost full in three weeks. And so, that's only going to, it kind of gives you a glimpse of what's going on, whether it's Canvas, the social workers, the psychologists that are here, and their expertise, we're still flooded. And so, that as you think about what's going on in the next five years, there's going to be more chemical dependency, not only in families, but also with our students. There's going to be more and more mental health issues. There's an old book that I wrote in Johnson Institute, it's called Chemical Dependency of Family Affair. And what we know is the impact of divorce, the impact of chemical use, the impact of mental health issues in the families, impact kids and how they learn and whether they'll be able to be present in the schoolroom. After I finish talking, which is just in a moment, I'd like to give you an example of a scholarship essay that was written by a student, and she has given me permission to share it with you, but I don't want to share it publicly. I just want each of you to realize what can happen. She's currently a junior at college, got the scholarships, has got put together things, and is constantly moving on. I still ironically still see her periodically because there's no one else to support her. And it's not that this is just one of many that are done quietly outside the system, and that my hope is that you'll continue thinking in these terms, that there are people that can be helped and their lives changed dramatically on a path. And I do want, what I wanted to do is come and thank you for all the years of support. It is an amazing gift to not only for me, because I believed so strongly in kids and families and employees, and a healthy employee system gives you a healthy teaching system that gives you a better access to kids. And that's all I have to say. So, thank you again for everything you have given us and the opportunity, because it's rare. When I think it was Tim, he would go and talk about our program, and everybody wanted to call me, and many people did, to say, can you do that program in our district? And I would just say, no, I'm just committed to Hastings. And so, thank you for being committed back, that it's a mutual relationship and that I've adored and grateful for the trust. So, thank you.
Renee, thank you so much for a very long period of time, and good luck in the retirement. I mean, we'll continue to work with your associates, but you'll be missed, and hopefully you'll be around from time to time. Anybody else have anything? Director Dean?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I just want to echo what Director Davis said and say thank you to you personally for believing in this model and committing to this model. And really, on a secondary level, is modeling for us what continuous learning looks like, and open-mindedness and empathy, and being prepared to meet students and staff where they are. And even if that looks different than the previous year, and to stay with us through the course of the decades, it's been absolutely critical and been very, very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. It's touching. It's hard to say goodbye. So, thank you so much.
Good luck, Renee.
Thank you.
While Renee is passing those out, Director McDowell, do you have anything else to announce as recognition, sir?
I do not.
With that, we will move on to Listening Session summary, and that would be Director Maum.
Director Dresley and I sat down with two individuals of the community tonight. Just for the community as a whole, you can sign up for Listening Sessions where two board members will sit down with you. You can address any issues that you please. Please sign up by 20 minutes to, so 5:40. And it can be any topic. We prefer that it's about the school, but it can be really any topic. So, tonight's discussion, I thought it was very, it was good because it was about policy. And so, Director Dresley and I sit on the committee along with Director Hadeen, so they had the right audience. The first individual brought up a few different concerns. I do want to say that this individual has brought up these concerns for multiple months. And I feel like I should be waving. Has brought up these concerns a few different times. We have responded to the best of our ability and addressed that, you know, the incident that happened multiple months ago regarding the book fair is resolved. The board has moved on seven months ago. And there's nothing further to state about that. The two individuals spoke about Policy 215, and they addressed their concerns and provided suggestions for improvement, which is appreciated. Same with Policy 206. One individual addressed Policy 206, which I want to let the community know is under active review. The Listening Sessions, you know, as we sat down during a work session to discuss Policy 206, and this is more for the community as a whole, just to give some background, because we support educators, but we also need to educate as well. Policy 206 is under review during a work session. The majority of the board wanted to bring it so that the public could speak to all of us at the same time, so that we were all on the same page. So, that is under active review and revision, and we may see changes in the near future. One individual brought up Policy 249, and the inquiry was about making public comment. And so, for Policy 249, I apologize, that is about conflicts of interest, and that is on our agenda for tonight. So, making public comment about this particular policy for the community as a whole, public comment can be made through an email to the entire board. And then, you know, and one of the things, and I recognize this, and this is kind of, you know, with the Listening Sessions, you only get two individuals. So, you know, wanting to address the entire board, so that, keeping in mind, 206 is under review, but with public comment, you know, during the session tonight, it's not open for public comment, but that can be done through an email or speaking to any of us about the concerns. The specific concern was Paragraph 4B, employees and conflicts of interest, in reference to, and this has been clarified through legal too, is that the question was about a board member or board members that, you know, the definition of supervising versus what is their role? Are they considered an employee? No, they are not. They are a board member. So, that we have vetted through our legal office, and that has been addressed. I do want to make one other comment about the Listening Sessions. So, I love the passion, and I invite anybody to come and speak to us. I think it's a great opportunity, and hopefully, we can have the whole board be a part of them in the future. But I also want to reiterate that we have values within ISD 200 specifically for tonight. I want to highlight respect and empathy and voice. I think every community member has a voice, and it's important that they are heard. But with that, there's respect. Tonight, an individual slammed down a piece of paper and said, you will read this at the meeting. I'm not going to read it. It's not appropriate. I will, however, pass it off to the chair, and he may address it as he sees fit. So, keeping that in mind, that we are student-centered. I loved the discussion about policies. I thought the conversation, or not conversation, but with the second individual, it was very clear what his intent was, and I greatly appreciate that. So, that's, hopefully, I captured everything? That is my summary. Director Dresley is nodding yes.
No statements can be made from the public. We're out of order. We are out of order. Calling the meeting back into order. Is that complete your summary, Director Maum? Thank you. That moves us to Superintendent Report.
All right, I'll be fairly quick tonight. A couple of updates. We're expanding our classroom connections that we do over Facebook that will include our support areas this year. So, many people saw the latest one with Ron Banky, our network administrator. So, Kerry Gore and I are trying to make that not just be about our classrooms, but about all the personnel that we have in the district. Another highlight that folks may want to check out, and this would be on HCTV, is the latest Take a Hike Mike video, where Mike Bremer tries to learn what it takes to be a part of our marching band. And he does a nice job of capturing all the different components that go into what our marching band does to get ready for their awesome performances. We are again this year partnering with Homeland Health Specialists to provide flu shots for our staff during September and October. And folks should start to notice new signage at the Hastings Water Tower. The home of the Raiders is now on the backside that faces all the fields, but it's much bigger than what it was before, and so, that's looking really good. And we are planning on in October, to give, people will know that October 1st is a date that we look forward to because we get a lot of our numbers in. And so, our October board meeting will be one where we plan to provide an update on those numbers and our demographics and those types of things that even the board has asked for. And lastly, next week is our Ready Homecoming, and it kicks off on Sunday with the annual student-staff volleyball extravaganza at the high school.
That would be the one that leads to a lot of injuries on the staff's end, right? I remember that from last year. Okay, moving on to the Building Construction Fund project update.
So, there are a lot of projects that have been kind of in process over the summer months. Some of those included the high school and middle school privacy improvements, the middle school storage shed, the ALC, the high school parking lot, middle school track, high school lighting, and high school carpet. As far as the actual report goes, there's no new projects that have been added, and in contingency right now, we're at about $459,000.
Director Dean?
Just for clarification, that's contingency beyond the projects that were approved at a couple, three board meetings ago. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Super? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Super. Appreciate it. ISD 917 update, Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I provided our board notes. I think it's interesting to see how this aligns with the work that we do, or the way we approach work here in 200. Currently, 917 does a work session immediately prior to the board meeting, and we take on policies and contract review and all those things that we would do in a work session. 917 has high aspirations, but they're struggling with the same things all districts are struggling with right now, which is staffing and primarily in the parapositions. So, at the time of this meeting, and I suspect it's still true, we have students on a waiting list to be evaluated or entered into a 917 program, and our students and students of all nine participating districts are in that position because of staffing shortages on the 917 side. And those are everything from paras to like a construction and trades instructor right now, that they had retired but have not been able to fill. So, you know, they're looking at different ways to approach contracts and to make it enticing place to work. Certainly, as a values-driven place to work, it's just challenging work, and I think that's the primary issue that they're facing right now.
Thank you very much, Director Hadeen. Any questions for Director Hadeen? We'll move to the Policy Committee Report. Director Maum?
You'll see on the report that we went through multiple policies, many of which you will find on the agenda for tonight, either for approval, second read, or first read. So, we did receive an update from, it was through email because Ms. Larson wasn't able to attend our meeting, but with the Series 600 policies, 604, that is coming back to us at our October 19th meeting. 616, there were some discrepancies with the MSBA model policy that were, that needed to, so we talked to MSBA, and then now it's being worked on, and we should hopefully see that cleaned up and to us. see that cleaned up and to us soon. 613, that is going to, that is on our agenda tonight, that was one of the ones that we pulled out to discuss further, but it does align. And we're going to table, kind of table the conversation until, or, sorry, the discussion until further notice, because of there's adjustments that we need to consider. So right now, we're sitting pretty good, and we can talk about this during the actual policy, too, but we're sitting pretty good, but there will be some further discussions before it comes back to us. So 208, we did an extensive review of this, making Paragraph 3 so that there's actual definitions on there. So like with the, and we talked about this in a work session, with the policies, you know, reviewed, revised, adopted, making sure that the actual definition is in 208, so that when it's, when you see it on a policy, either at the top or at the bottom, that you know specifically what that date means. This, because we wanted to make sure that there was a clean cut with when that's actually implemented, this will be, the reviewed, revised, adopted will be implemented effective 2023. Recommended changing the annual review requirements to reflect MSBA's recommendations for policies 506 and 722, which are required, and 806, which are, which is recommended, and then recommended striking the second sentence in Paragraph 6D to make it simple. 417, this will go to a first read in October, at our board meeting in October. 7, Policy 722, we'll be reviewing this a little bit further. There was, it's with the legal team right now, so they're taking a look at it to make sure that it's legally sufficient and that it meets our needs, but it'll come back either at our 5 October or 19 October meeting. And then you'll see on here that we did follow up with our August 24th board meeting with 428, 429, 612, and 903. So thank you for the comments. We were able to hopefully capture all of the comments and for consideration tonight. And then with the July 2022 MSBA policy changes, there are substantive changes, those you'll see for first review, or first read, and then the non-substantive policies, that, those can go, because it's like the citations that changed, those can go for approval. We did pull a few out for further discussion. We revised our mission statement because Director Dresley did a great job of reminding us that it's a little outdated. So we simplified it, and you can see it right there. And then our policy meeting, we have a pretty heavy workload coming up. You can see that our August, or, excuse me, October 5th agenda will be focused on whatever comes out of tonight, and then 206.
Yeah, there's a lot. Thank you, Director Ma. I appreciate all the work the Policy Committee is doing in trying to pull this together. I know it's a lot of work. Why don't we move straight into the policies and the first readings here, which brings it back to Director Ma. We've got substantive changes, and then just one policy after the other. These are just, these are just changes? These are all just changes, right?
These are, yeah.
Okay. So I'll open it up to questions for the Policy Committee on any of these first readings that are currently listed. Sorry, it was already on. Director Tate.
I actually have a request. I, I'm not a big fan of this policy, and a big reason why is that a lot of, a lot of the verbiage in there states that basically if you disagree, you're unethical. And I don't, I don't think that that's appropriate.
I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to make sure we're clear on the record. You're talking about 209, correct?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead, please continue.
So I did do a little bit of research, and I looked up Oseo's policy number 209, and they actually call it School Board Standards. And I think that their policy actually aligns, their verbiage and what they've got included in that policy actually aligns much better with, I think, what we, what we expect. And I would, I'm just asking that the Policy Committee take a look at that, if they could and consider possibly modifying our policy to be more in line with that.
Director Ma.
Thank you for that. Would you mind sending me that policy, please? So I believe 209, actually all the 200 series policies, they're up for review in 2023, so that's pretty timely.
Absolutely open to making any changes we need to make. Thank you, Director Tate. In terms of 209 or any other pieces, anything else, anybody else would like to add on any of those? It's open to anything that's on that first read. That'd be obviously 209, 210, 416, 418, 515, so on forth. Yes, Director Ma, please.
I just want to give a shout out to Director Tate. She, over the last few days, it's very clear that you spent a lot of time looking through that and provided an email to Mrs. Garcia and myself with, you know, the grammatical and punctuation changes. So I appreciate your efforts in doing that.
Yes, thank you very much for that. I was unaware of that I'm involved, but that's terrific. Excuse me, losing my voice here. So across the rest of our first readings, anything else for anyone that's a question or something they'd like to talk about? Director Tate, I'm sorry? No, all of them, any of them, yes.
I have comments on everything.
Oh, okay. So let's back up.
209 is done.
Okay.
That was my comment.
All right, so let's, let's go back and jump into 210.
So 210 is interesting, so 210 is the conflict of interest for school board members. And I think we had had the conversation about including procedures in the policies for the school, for the 200 specifically. And I think this would be a really good opportunity to solidify procedures for those who have conflicts of interest, to make sure that that's clear, because even, for example, for the closed session that we had last week, we got clarification upfront of what could be done, what couldn't. And this, I think, would be a great opportunity to include that information into the policy itself, so that we don't have to every time be like, oh, wait, somebody has conflict of interest, how do we treat this? So I, I did, after the closed session last week, I did reach out to MSBA just to ask their opinion about having conflicts of interest regarding within the school board, and how is that handled with closed sessions and all that kind of thing. And Terry Morrow had directed me to the, he said it's not clear, and it's not specifically clear with what I was asking, because I said, we've got members with, who are involved in these contracts, and we may be having discussions about them. And he said the best thing to look at is that state statute 471.88, which addresses when a board member's spouse is involved in the contracts, which it says that you should ultimately recuse yourself from those conversations and those votes. So he said maybe it's not very, very specific, but that it would be a reasonable assumption that anyone involved in those contracts in any way familial or whatever, or directly, that they would not be involved in those, in those conversations. So that's just something that I'd like to ask, that maybe we consider and talk about adding, like I said, the specifics.
Director Ma, go ahead.
Did you specifically ask him about negotiations?
I specifically said we were discussing strategy, strategy, was that what we called it, strategy negotiation, negotiation strategy? I said it was a closed session about negotiation strategy, and, you know, how do you handle people with conflicts of interest in that case? And that was the response that I received.
Okay, that's noted. 416. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Hadeen, I didn't realize you had your hand up. Director Hadeen.
Thank you. I don't have any comment on 210, it's a first reading, it's time to take input and consideration. I do have some concern of process, process within the school board. And I just want to make sure that when we get to our retreat, that we recommit ourselves to following our committee structured process and our chair process, rather than kind of individual investigation brought to a, to a public setting.
I'll note that comment. Let's, okay, so, so any addition, subtraction, 416? Director Tate.
So I, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
I thought any school board member could reach out to MSBA with questions regarding policy, law, whatever, when they're, when they're wondering how, how it's supposed to work, what. I thought that they were there as a resource for us, because we all have memberships. So I guess I'm not understanding Director Hadeen's concern with my asking MSBA question.
You know what? I see, I'm going to call point of order on that. That is something that, let's, I want to, it takes us off the course where we are right now, but I do think it's worthwhile discussion that we can probably bring into our retreat session, which is coming up, rather than in this space right now. But I will note it right now. And then we can talk about 416, if you'd like, Director Tate.
Yeah, so I noticed, and it's the same way in MSBA's policy, I don't know if we would change it or not, but under the definitions in B1 and B7 include the same verbiage, so that B1 actually includes what is noted in B7. So it's kind of duplication. Like I said, MSBA's policy is this, their model policy is the same way, but I just wanted to note that if, if we would want to change it, so it's not duplicative.
That's for 416?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Director Tate. 418.
I made, yep. In Section 3E, excluding smoking is, the notation excluding smoking is included in our policy, but it's not in MSBA's. So just wondering why we would exclude smoking specifically, having that called out. And then I'm also wondering in general, this is the, this is the, what's the name of it? Drug-free workplace school, which also involves student information, or student activities as well. I was wondering if we would want to include specific language around vaping, because it's, I know it's included in the words, but I'm wondering if we specifically would want to call it out.
Director Ma.
You mean like add a definition to what vaping is?
Well, it talks about what's, everything that's not allowed at school activities, in the buildings, all this kind of stuff, including paraphernalia. And I'm just wondering if we would want to call that out specifically to ensure that more, more so students understand that that is included in that policy.
Sorry, Director Tate, 515?
Sorry, I have a lot of notes.
No worries.
I think, I think I may have sent all of this in the email to you and Becky, and it might have been, it's the stuff that she wouldn't have updated.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just regarding some, some different verbiage that's a little bit different between ours and MSBA's. They've got some.
Okay, then that'll be folded back in by the committee, then. The committee will fold that back in, then.
I just want to make sure I got everything. Yep, you should, yeah, you should have everything for that one.
Awesome. 603. Yep, I'm ready for you.
It's still me. There is, in the MSBA model policy, there's a significant amount of legal language regarding the District Advisory Committee, School Site Team, and Curriculum Development Process, which is not included in our proposed policy. So I'm just wondering if there, if there's a reason that that specific legal language was omitted or is not included in our current policy.
That's probably one I would think committee would take back under advisement and talk about in committee. Is that correct, Director Ma? Okay. So we'll note that. 709.
709. This one, MSBA in Section 4, Part A, MSBA model states that the school bus and bus stop rules will be provided to each family, and our policy states that it's posted on the district website. Parents and guardians are asked to review the rules with their children. I, however, was not able to find this information on our website. So I don't know if we, if we would want, I'm just thinking, knowing how many issues occur on the bus, it might be a good thing that we might want to supply directly to families rather than, rather than having them seek it on the website, although I will admit, I'm not very good at finding things on our website. So that might just be my, my issue, but, but I was just wondering if we would want to update that verbiage to make sure that families are having those conversations with, with their kids.
Well, people find it in different ways, so I think that's fair. Everybody's got a different strength, email, Googling, whatever, space, so we can note that as well. And finally, 721.
I have nothing on this one.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything else on any of the first readings? Okay. That being the case, if there is none, we are going to move to second reading, starting with Policy 428. So there it is. Okay. I'm sorry, Director Ma? No worries.
Okay. So with 428, there was an inquiry last month during the first reading regarding the legal references, so we dug into that. This is a Hastings School District-specific policy, there is no MSBA policy to reference for legal references. So what we did was just made that modification at the bottom. And the same thing will be for 429.
So the language is the same, it's just that modification at the bottom in each case, both that and 429?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Okay. So that's the sum total of changes in those two, right? Okay. All right, we're going to take these, now, we can take these one by one. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Tate.
Yeah, so for 428, I actually was thinking about this quite a bit over the last month, and I requested input from some constituents on it. One thing that I am proposing that we add into this policy is, since this is the ethics policy for staff, I recommend that we add language consistent with the Minnesota Administrative Rule 8710.2100, which is the Code of Ethics for Minnesota Teachers. Yep, it's administrative rule 8710.210. That is the Code of Ethics for Minnesota Teachers. And I think that in the ethics policy, that would be a fantastic place to put, to put that information, because I don't believe that we have that anywhere else, or we would have it anywhere else. Another, another concern that I have after going through this again is that in general, this policy seems to be too subjective. For example, Section 2 states unethical actions or the appearance of unethical actions are unacceptable under any conditions. And then there's a question later that says, am I sure my action does not appear inappropriate? But ultimately, people are being asked to more or less use their own guide on their own ethics in making these decisions. And I think that if you ask 700 individuals about their ethics, they're going to have 700 different comments on what it means to them. And so I think that... And so I think that we should, at this time, this would be a good time to basically create what are our expected ethical behaviors or unethical behaviors and actually spell them out. Let's see, I mean, is, for example, I was just looking up some, some company, you know, examples and stuff like that, and they've got, you know, be honest, respect your, your coworkers, be accountable, uphold trust, act in a professional manner, take responsibility for your actions and decisions, that kind of thing. And then, in addition, having, being responsible when it comes to your presence on social media. Like, it's, it's inappropriate to complain or unethical to complain about your own workplace, your, your superiors, your coworkers, that kind of thing. And then, in the policy also, it has, there's, there's sections E and F, there are questions. But actually, for E, it says that, you know, basically, are there things that are embarrassing? It's like, well, yeah, there are things that are embarrassing that we wouldn't want to end up somewhere, but it's not necessarily unethical. So again, it's a very subjective look at this. And I think that the other piece that I, that I don't see anywhere in our policies, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, but with our staff, considering the fact that we have staff surrounded by students every day and children every day, thinking that there should be some kind of, something in a policy stating appropriate or inappropriate relationships with children, with the students. And then I also have in here, from a constituent, having information about not promoting political ideologies and political advocacy, advocacy within, within the building, within the schools. And then the other one that I had was, you know, ultimately, who, who's going to be policing this, this policy? And how, how would somebody go about, you know, enacting it and making sure that it's done fairly and in an unbiased manner? Those are all the comments I got.
Director Ma.
If I'm looking at, so just commenting on four twenty-nine and four twenty-eight, these are in reference to accounting and finance. Is that a correct statement?
For the most part, that's what they're referencing.
Okay. In the employee handbook, does it specify ethical, like defining it a little bit clearer? Do you know? I haven't looked at it, so I apologize.
I'm not prepared to look on that up.
So I'll just make that note, and then we can talk about it at Policy Committee.
And that would cover four twenty and four twenty-nine then?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll take a look at that. Yep. Yep, that's fine. It's absolutely fine. So we'll throw those back. Throw those back. That brings us to, Director Tate, go ahead.
Sorry, those were my comments on four twenty-eight. And I do have some comments on four twenty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were incorporating the two together. I apologize.
Nope.
Okay.
I, sorry. Section. Oh, section seven, it calls out a design, I believe it says designee of the district, and I'm wondering if that could be clarified? Because it says that you should report, I believe, if I remember off the top of my head, it says that you should report it to your superintendent or a designee. I'm just wondering if we could clarify that with a, with a title name?
Uh, sorry, Director, sorry, Superintendent McDowell.
That is the common verbiage if the superintendent has the ability to designate someone, so you wouldn't put their names in policy. The only time we put the name in policy is for Title Nine.
Right, I mean, the title name though, the title of the person? Would you ever want that for clarification or?
Not in the policy, because it could change, depending upon who it is.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
The other one, we had, we had discussed this part right here, actually. The, what is it, four A one? It states currently, the Chair of the Board, oh, in the green, down right there, the Chair of the Board shall be responsible for identifying resolutions involving the superintendent. Wondering if we could update that to state identifying the resolutions and working with the full board regarding conflicts of interest involving the superintendent? Make sure that that's clear. That's all I had for four twenty-nine.
We're not, not going to move it. We'll move into here already. Okay. Policy six oh two is organization of school calendar and the school day. Yes, Director Tate?
Just one thing that I noticed, some, I've noticed some of our policies have page numbers and others don't. This one does not have page numbers, so I didn't know if we wanted to update to be consistent, or if we're going the other direction or what, so.
Okay. Now, the organization of school calendar and school day, if that's what we're talking about, it's just a matter of page numbers, that can be, if we want to move into an action item. Obviously, the other two will not be, but six oh two could be moved into an action item if we so deem it.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
We've already had discussion. Any, all those in favor of moving policy six oh two to an action item? Signify by saying aye. What? Cause second, cause second reading, we can move to an action item.
We had this conversation a couple of months ago that we're going to move to a multiple, to a three-month process, right?
I forgot about that.
So, given that there was no, I don't think we even have to take motion on it. We heard a second reading, we heard that there were insignificant comments, that, so that sounds done. So I would anticipate that at our October board meeting, this would be identified as an action item, probably in the consent agenda.
We don't have to afford that.
We don't have to move for that, and we don't have to.
Perfect.
And it's not a time sensitive issue.
No, it is not. Perfect. Thank you. Six twelve. Uh, no, you do not. You don't. Okay, policy six twelve, development apparent family engagement policies for Title One. How are we feeling about that one, folks?
I have a comment, if you want to pull it up. If you scroll down to the portion that has been omitted, it just requires, it requires renumbering. If all of that is omitted, and then you go down, it starts with like number three or something like that, so it's a random numbering, so the numbering needs to be adjusted. That's it.
Noted. And that brings us to policy nine zero three, visitors to school district buildings and sites. Director Tate?
There's, okay. In, at the end of four. It looks like there's some renumbering that's needed, or re, there's an A and then a random B at the end of it. So I don't think you need either A or B. And then the MSBA model policy in, in four B reads differently, and I didn't know if we would want to update ours. Ours says, the school district administration shall establish a visitor and post-secondary enrollment options, student procedures and requirements. And MSBA says, the superintendent shall be responsible for providing coordination that may be needed throughout the process and providing for periodic school board review and approval of the procedures. It was just very different comments. Or very different pieces of the policy.
We can refer that back to policy, and they can take a look at that.
Okay.
Superintendent McDowell?
Just make a comment that you'll have to be clear about whether this gets back into policy versus procedure. Keeping that statement in there would suggest that as a board, you're going to approve procedures, which is what I was thinking we were getting away from.
Thank you for that clarification. Like I said, I think the Policy Committee will take that back and take it under advisement and come up with what we're going to do there. All right, that brings us through the readings, and brings us to the action items, starting with the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been modified. If you're looking at Board Book, you'll see that it has been modified according to what we discussed at the start of the meeting. So now with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda so we can move to the action items.
So moved.
Second.
With a first and a second, and we've obviously talked about this consent agenda quite a bit. I need a mo, sorry, all those in favor of the consent agenda is now written, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes? That brings us up to our individual action items. I think I went past it. So the first, I'm sorry? Oh, okay, so what we've got first up is, I understand, action is our bills payable. So let's ask, first and foremost, Ms. Subert, if there's anything outstanding, anything that jumps out at us, and then we can walk through any questions regarding it, and then we'll get to that. I'm sorry, we have to have, I always forget that. We need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss it.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm going to ask Ms. Subert to expound anything she feels, and if you expound on any questions, can then be asked by the board. There is nothing. Okay. So that brings us to questions. Director Tate?
I just wanted to ask the question, for the general fund categories, four hundred supplies and equipment and eight hundred other expenses, being that we are early in the, in the fiscal year, are there any concerns regarding the fact that we are thirty-two percent of our budget spent and sixty-six percent of the budget spent on those?
So we're kind of in a unique place right now where we're operating in two fiscal years. So usually for July and August, those are the months that we're mostly kind of running those two years at the same time. So there's currently some expenses that are reflected in this report that were moved back to the prior fiscal year in September. So when you see the September report, those percent spends will look more in line with what they should. It's really just a timing thing. So at this point, I do not have concerns, no.
Thank you.
Additional bills payable, questions or comments? Director Tate?
I just, when I was reviewing the bills payable, I did see just something that was a little concerning regarding it being more of a nice to have than a need to have. So I'm just wondering what, what are the, have there been communications, or what kind of guardrails have been put in place and communications to staff about spending right now? I'm just concerned with our budget cuts, potential budget cuts coming up being pretty large. What kind of communications have been going out to make sure that the choices for spending are being made diligently and making sure that we're getting the need-to-have stuff?
That's administrative, so I'll throw that to Superintendent McDowell.
So there's a couple of things embedded in that question. One is, what's the process for spending? And like we've talked all along with budgets, building budgets and building administrators and administrators inside of buildings, getting budgets, and have to work within the same guidelines. We've talked before about what the protocols are as far as defining appropriate expenditures versus inappropriate expenditures, the training and information that all of the administrators get to do that. That's a different question than sending communication out to administrators about what they can and can't spend money on. We currently do not have restrictions on what an administrator decides to or to not decide on. An example would be about a year ago, we, when we did reduce the supply budgets, that would be the example of how we, you know, kind of pull things back, because we don't micromanage every bit of an administrator's budget. They get their budget, they need to live within the budget. My question to them, Jen Subert's question to them, is whether they are within budget or without a budget. They decide what they need, what they don't need. Some things to some people seem like wants, other things to other people seem like needs. It depends upon what specific department and or building is doing at a given time. And that's really, I would remind the board, that's the board's question. Is, is the budget being operated within the confines of what was allocated for that budget or not? If there are things that the board as a whole would say, yeah, I don't know that we want to be doing stuff like that, then the board as a whole would need to say, I don't think we want to be doing stuff like that. But we, we don't, we don't micromanage that. And so as far as guardrails go on, the guardrails really pertain to what is considered or not considered an appropriate expenditure and is processed being followed, of which that training is given to all of our administrators. And that's the information I think we've gone over twice now with the board in terms of all the steps that are in place. A prime example is, I'm signing off on all of the P card usages right now, because we're at that time of year where anybody that has a P card gets reminded and has to go through all the requirements, or here's what you can spend stuff on, here's what you can't spend stuff on. Again, it has nothing to do with the, whether it's, it's a need or a want, it's, you need to stay within these confines based on auditory requirements and GASB requirements, as well as statutory or federal law requirements, what's inside your program. So those are the guardrails. Anything more than that, again, would end up having to be a, board as a whole, like we don't want to be, we don't want to be doing this anymore. A prime example of that would be, school boards at certain times will say, we don't want any out-of-state travel. So for staff or anybody, and that's a board saying, you cannot spend any, any money on this, we, we need to tighten things up. I don't know if that helps?
Thank you.
Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I would also like to point out that the adopted, so the board level question is, are we within budget, are we operating within budget? And we adopted that budget on the twenty-seventh of June. That was when the decision was made, how much would be allocated?
Director Beisel?
I just want to clarify, nobody's taking advantage of this. This was just a simple question, correct? Because we're obviously paying attention to the spending, and they did, the administrators decide what they feel is want and need, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct. They're within budget. They're within budget. So that's, you know, an opportunity to clarify that, you know, it's getting this governance versus management thing, an opportunity to get through that, and we'll get to that in one of our work sessions, but it's an opportunity to learn. So they're within budget. Director Tate, was there anything else on bills payable?
No.
All right, with that then, let's vote to move bills payable forward or approve it for this month, I should say. All those in favor of the, we didn't have a motion. No, that's, it's okay. All those in favor of approving the bills payable, please signify by saying aye. Aye. It is four, I believe I counted. Those opposed? Two. Please note that. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is bills payable consent agenda. We've had bills payable as a plow for quite some time, just to kind of get a feet under us, get a good feel for it. I think we're in a position now where the bills payable is a think we're in a position now where the bills payable is available ahead of time and can be reviewed, and then questions can be asked of the administration, and then we'll be in position to be able to approve it at the regular meeting as part of the consent agenda, which is why we're looking at moving it back. That's just some context. I need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss.
So moved. Second.
All right, that opens us up to any discussion around moving bills payable back to the consent agenda based on the summary that I provided. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were raising your hand. Okay. Director Tate?
One of the main reasons that I wanted to move it out of the consent agenda was for more transparency and the ability to easily ask questions. And I think that moving it back in and then, you know, having to move it back out at a certain meeting, it's future meetings, takes time, but it also, I'm thinking if it stays out of the consent agenda as it is now, if there are no questions, it takes, you know, what, 30 seconds to approve? So I guess I am more comfortable keeping it out, especially with, you know, we have such a huge budget. I don't, I don't want to bury it in a consent agenda. I guess that's what I feel like happens when you put something that significant in a consent agenda. Just my opinion.
And I think that's fair. I also think, though, that the bills payable, because it's available for anybody to review, anybody in, I guess, the free world, honestly, it's not protected, could look at that at any given time. If somebody in the public wanted to look at and review, they certainly could at any given time. It doesn't have to be brought up here. They can certainly look at it any time. Then, of course, if they had questions, they could also send questions to the board asking. It doesn't even have to be us. But of course, that's just my two cents as well. There are six of us here. So thanks for that input, Director Tate, as well. Director Beisel?
I tend to agree with you. I feel like if we have a lot of questions, and like you said, the public can see this, but if we have questions, we should be emailing that ahead of time so that we can get the answers clarified, either at the board meeting or not asking questions and have to wait for another meeting or so. So I think the emailing, the questions, getting them ahead of time or the night of, seems more appropriate than asking during the meetings and having to wait a month or so for the answers.
Thank you, Director Beisel. Anyone else with any comments? All right, then we'll just put it to a vote then. All those in favor of moving the consent agenda back into, sorry, moving the bills payable back into the consent agenda, noting that the bills payable is available for the public to see, and that not just the board, but anybody can ask questions of us to get answers to those things when the board is available. All those in favor of being moved back, signify by saying aye, please? That's four. Those opposed? Four, two. Please note that. Motion passes. We're moving to non-contracted rates of pay.
All right, we have three documents for this one.
Yeah, this is a little bigger.
And it's a little bigger because this is one of those pieces for the public, because I've explained this to the school board, just so that they've heard it more than once. This is one of those pieces where we made an adjustment, and the board did already approve non-contracted rates of pay, which in theory seemed like it was working really well until we got to the school year and an operation discovered that we had some other things that, once you start going through and trying to pay all the different positions, it just wasn't working out the way it theoretically should have. And so we needed to go back and review that and worked with the athletic directors. And so this first page, really, we're addressing three different things. There are positions that, in the other attachment, that worked for a certain amount of pay, that was divided up in terms of if you worked less than, or up to three hours, and then over three hours to six hours, and then over six hours to 12 hours, and then there was a rate assigned to that. What we were attempting to move to was a flat hourly rate, and what ended up happening is, as you calculate that out, someone who's been with the district and is used to receiving a, up to three hours, I automatically get this amount, if you do it by the hourly rate, they'd actually be getting less than what they had last year. So what we're doing is, you'll see there's a note that we're grandfathering those people in. So if they were working with us last year, they're still going to get grandfathered and get that paid that rate. But anybody that is hired new is going to get an hourly rate, which is really more in line with probably how we should be paying people, is if you're working two hours, you get paid for two hours. If you're working three hours, you get paid three hours. So that's the first one. The second one is a recommendation, and from the athletic office, they've budgeted based on what they believe they need around to get the $20 per hour rather than 25, and so they want that changed back to $20, so that that's in line there. And then we did look at other middle schools and how they were paying their officials. And so in looking at that and trying to remain competitive, we've changed our official compensation, officials' compensation, to almost be at where our ninth grade officials are right now, but we'll step it this first time and look at stepping it again, maybe in a year and not taking the bite off, because it is quite an increase for what it was. But other districts already made the jump, and so we were left lagging behind and didn't really know that until we got to the fall sports season. So those three things are what's taking place and why this is back on the agenda to be reapproved.
Okay, thank you for that background. That's very helpful, obviously. I need a motion to approve and a second, and then we can discuss.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion. The one thing I will just add to this in the discussion component of this, is the one thing that any of us, you know, most of us pay attention, either our kids in sports or things, is that there's been a shortage of officials. So these districts very quickly moved to up the rate of pay to try to get these officials back in, which worked to a certain degree, but now we're sitting with us paying less, which means officials will choose to go officiate other games other than ours, which leaves us holding the bag with no officials. So it's kind of like you keep up with the Joneses, even if you don't disagree, even if you don't agree with the Joneses, you have to keep up. Although, I know why it was done. It had to do with the shortage of officials, which apparently is still going on within the state, which is why all of our football games aren't on Fridays anymore. They're all over the place. So it's, you know, it's a bit of a conundrum we've got going on. That's me. Anyone else? Trust me then. Okay, so we'll just put that one to a vote. The non-contracted rates of pay and approval of that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like five. Those opposed? Abstain? Lisa Dean is abstaining. Five, zero, one. That moves us to the enrollment of non-resident students. Director McDowell, Superintendent McDowell, is there any background on this that we need before we walk into it?
Well, this is your third meeting for this? So the rest of these policies, so this is that process of, you've been through a first reading?
Yep.
Been through a second reading, these are in for the third reading. So I would defer to Director Mom, if there's anything more to add to these policies.
Director Mom, anything significant that we need to know about? No problem.
No, there's nothing to note, actually. Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. These are the policies that Director Tate requested that they get pulled from the consent agenda for her inquiries regarding, I believe, legal references.
So Director Tate?
Yep, so Part 2G and G1, termination of enrollment, or, yeah, termination of enrollment per MSBA's model. We have, we have it noted in multiple places that it's 16 years of age, but the MSBA model states 17 years of age. So I believe that that legally is a legal change. And then the other portion for clarification, there's three spots in that same area where it specifies in a school year, it talks about how many absences are acceptable, and we don't have a timeframe for that. MSBA policy states in a school year, so I want to make sure that there's no confusion about in a calendar year in whatever. But most importantly, I was concerned about the 16s being changed to 17s.
Director Tate, can you cite, so it's two, you said two G?
Sorry, I moved.
Oh, no, I found it. I found it.
Okay, yeah.
Director Tate, was there anything else with 509?
Yes, this was the other one I had emailed you about, Director Mom, regarding the 2A. It should read, "The capacity of a program excluding special education services." Our policy does not have that. Piece. And then the other comment that I have in here is 2D. The, there's a program that's listed out in that section, and ours is like six inches long, and the one in MSBA is like three inches long. So it's obviously very different verbiage for the same program. So I don't know if the program changed the name or what. That's in 2D. It's the second line, remember that? Enrollment, yeah, that application for enrollment, School District Enrollment Options Program. It's like half that long in the model policy. And that has to do with, I believe, Minnesota Department of Education, and so that should have a specific title. That's all I had for 509.
Okay. So I don't know. We just want to take a quick look. Yeah.
Were these not changes that came from MSBA?
They couldn't have been.
So we would need to check on that, because my understanding is that the items that are in there as green, those were the ones that were updated by MSBA themselves as part of their update.
I think she's referring to the bold above it, the line above it, the enrollment, School District Enrollment Options. I think that was the piece.
And that's in their model policy.
That's in their model policy? That verbiage, like that? Okay. I haven't looked it up. I'm just taking, I'm taking Director Tate's word that that is longer on ours. Like, it's not, it's not verbatim. So, yeah, I'm referring to the bold part, not the green part. Okay. Bring it up? Just cross-referencing, because if we can resolve it now, that'd be awesome. Yeah, student, school district. Yeah, it's the same.
Sorry about that.
It actually is the same.
And 509 is in the 2023 review cycle, so it'll go through a deep scrub at that time as well.
So it actually is the same. Okay, good. Good to know. So I'm sorry, what was the first one? Because I'm trying to figure out, if it's a simple thing, we can still vote on it tonight?
16 years of age.
Okay, we can change that and still vote tonight, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we were offered, so on policy, that's it for 509, correct, Director Tate?
Yeah, the only other comment I made was the clarification of in a school year for the timeframe regarding absences.
In a school year versus calendar year. Okay.
It's in--
2A.
Two, it's in 2G.
So 2G, I'm sorry.
And G1 again. There were, yeah, there's multiple places, I believe, where it says so many days.
Okay, I see.
Oh, it's above. Scroll up just a little bit there. So more than, more class periods on seven school days. It's after seven school days. I believe it's three different times in that paragraph. There's one right in the middle.
On line number three of that same paragraph, talks about school year as a definition of habitually true. So it's already, states that it's within the school year, not a calendar year, in the beginning of that paragraph.
It does, okay. All right, with that adjustment, and what we've, what we're, the tweaks we've made, adjustments we've made, I need a vote on approving 509. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. 522, Title IX, Sex Non-Discrimination. So I need a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All right. Anything on 522? Director Tate?
I just noticed that in the MSBA model policy, there is a specified portion for training, which includes a lot of legal language about, you know, the district shall, 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 and because that's omitted, I was just concerned that we didn't have that noted in there. And then there is also additional legal language in the definition of actual knowledge that seems prudent. And then also, there's one section that also includes, there's, that includes right to support, to a support person, which again, seems like a legal necessity to state.
Director Tate, which section is that? That last one?
This is a policy that we actually had legal draft for us last time in its current state. And so this is a policy that Kathy Mullen recommended that we don't make any changes to because of the amount of effort that went into creating this policy based on our legal. As a board, you can do what you want, but that's what I know.
This one was legally drafted? Okay.
It was, and so the updates would be the legal updates. So spelling out Minnesota statute, and then I'm looking at, this document is huge, so like, there's specifying what those statutes are.
So to Director Tate, pointing the legal pieces, we need to call those out. Okay. Specifically?
I have to look on my phone to get onto MSBA's site, I guess.
So in this particular instance, ours is going to differ because we wrote it. Well, we wrote it. You know what I mean? Should make sure the legal references are correct. We got there.
522 is also up for review cycle 2023, so it'll go through, yeah, another-- 522 is also up for review cycle 2023, so it'll go through, yeah, another scrub.
So it's going to get another scrub in addition, good. Okay. So we get the legal pieces taken care of, and we'll private business, Director Russell? Okay.
It's okay, we're here.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Okay, I finally found. Sorry. So, there's a, there's a portion, it's, it's an E, I have to scroll up to see what it is, but it says right to an advisor and right to a support person.
And you said it looked legal, right?
Yeah, that, that's why I was wondering if that.
What's the Roman numeral reference? It's just kind of a long document, so I'm trying to narrow it.
I know, that's exactly. Okay, so it is, uh, number one, under, section, one, under definitions. But it's way, it's like three pages later.
So it's four.
If you search for.
Page 11.
Right to an advisor. Right, yeah, right there. So, um, so MSBA's model policy, it doesn't just have right to an advisor, it also has right to a support person included in that, it's both of them listed together for that section.
So I would say this would be a moment that, as a board, you need to decide, are you going with MSBA, or are you going with your legal counsel? Because your legal counsel wrote this.
So when we have issues like this where legal wrote it, then are we, why are we making the MSBA suggested updates? Would be my question, I'm curious, because if we don't have everything in there that MSBA does, so I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
And I can maybe help with that, so, if you remember last time, we kind of talked through this, MSBA provides a service of blank policies. Policies that may or may not include everything that you absolutely have to have in them. Title IX is a huge thing that happened, and a significant change that happened over the last 24 months. So this was something where, at the time, we said, we're not messing around with what we think we want to put in it, what we think we don't want to put in it. We're going right to legal, we want legal's interpretation, so we make sure we've got a locktite policy, um, and so, legal took it, and I don't know if they started with MSBA model policy or not, but that's how we went with this one, so at the time, that was the policy committee's, recommendation and decision, and now we did it, so that, that's the best I can explain it.
I understand that, I'm just saying that when the updates come through then, for this, for these policies that were not done by, we weren't, we didn't follow MSBA's model to begin with, so that's fine, I get that. But then when these updates come through, that we're supposed to update to these, this policy, why are we doing it if that's not an MSBA? That's what my question is, is like, why are we doing that update then, if we might not have that language in there, that?
So that's where you'd want to cross-check it. Uh, because sometimes the updates from MSBA are an entire policy that gets rewritten a different way, or, um, they might just update the legal ref, you've seen that before, where they just update the legal references, so it might not matter which policy you have for that one. I would recommend, no different than what we're doing with 722 right now, as that one came through, to me, there was such a significant difference. I just, we're, as we're taking this, this one's going to legal to make sure before it even gets to a spot where that we start messing with stuff, we know what we can and we can't mess with from a legal ground.
Director Baisel?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, when we've talked about these policies, MSBA is just a model policy, we make these policies for Hastings. We just use them as a reference, and it's not that it has to be MSA, how they've written it, correct?
It doesn't, but they give us some pretty good jumping off points sometimes. Now, in this particular instance, Title IX is this big federal thing, so, so, no, but to Director Dresley's point, as if, if federal or state laws were to change around Title IX, that's what we'd have to be on top of to our point, to make sure that we got those references in there.
I'm just making a point for all these, we don't have to go by MSA's model policy, there's just a reference.
Sure.
And I think in this case, the changes, and we've, we've seen them in all of the, the MSBA reference, is around how Minnesota statutes are called out. It's, it's a modification of that, and that, that's what's happening here, that was the MSBA changes that were incorporated here. And those would, would be fair changes within a policy either written by our legal counsel, or written by MSBA. And, and that's the change we're looking at, nothing more substantive than that.
Superintendent McDowell?
Just had one more clarified to that, this is the perfect example of being Title IX, so, because there are strict training requirements, we bring our legal team in to do the training on all the different positions, so at least, so like, this goes back to the, an idea of like guardrails and stuff, right? So now we know is, and it doesn't have to be this policy, but for this policy, our legal team wrote it, our legal team is training on us based on what's in the policy, so as a board, you should have some level of comfort that your administrators and your staff are being trained in what your policy actually says. Now, you could do it differently, but that, I don't, maybe that helps for this, this specific policy.
That's helpful, because this, I just know how big this one was, and people pay a lot of attention to it, so, just wanted to make sure of that. So where does this leave us with Title IX, with 522? Did we make any significant changes as we've been talking? No changes at all, all right, then we can put that to a vote then. Um, all those in favor of passing Policy 522, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? I'm sorry, Director Baisel, did you? I, I, I missed that, okay, so that will be five to one, please note that. This moves us up to Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers. Incredibly remove students, blah, 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 okay. See, I need a motion in a second on this policy, please?
Some of.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Director Tate?
I, I noticed that there was one incorrect, it's either an incorrect title or an incorrect legal reference, I did not have time to look into it. So I just wanted to ask that the policy committee recheck their legal references to make sure that they're accurate.
Legal references.
Yep.
There are five references at the bottom of the, five different.
It was one of the green ones.
Okay, so it was at the bottom. Yep, that's MSBA then.
Yep.
Then that is MSBA, if those are, if that's the case.
It, I believe it's the 121A dot 67.
Is that an MSBA one? Eight dot sixty-seven, versus, aggressive deprivation procedures?
So the, um, yes, that, yes, so. That's what I, okay, so that's what I'm showing in my other document, and I just didn't know if it was an incorrect reference number, or incorrect.
Sure.
Title. Specifically.
It's mistitled.
If that's mistitled, um, we should also let MSBA know, right?
Okay, yeah, removal by peace officers, the title in the current statute.
Okay, so, we need to fix that quick, and then let MSBA know that it's not correct. Let's make that change and approve, and just let MSBA know it's not right. Since we got it from them. All right, with that change, um, thank you, Director Tate, with that change, um, all those in favor of Policy 532, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. That moves us to Policy 613, Graduation Requirements. I need a motion in a second, please? Since you guys talked in unison, I don't know who was the second. Okay. With the second, um, now conversation or discussion, please, on graduation requirements, Director Tate?
So I, I know that the policy, the policy committee notes say that we are in line with the 120B dot zero two four, but I didn't find that as I was reading through it, so I, so one thing that, of course, threw me off is the, they have a different definition of a credit in MSBA in an ours, and it, of course, it all goes back to the state statute. But it, it did not look like we had, um, for cer, certain areas for, I know one of them was, um, the electives, for example, I believe it's, it's like, the, the numbers are just completely different from each other, so I was just wondering if the, if the committee could review that to make sure that we are in line with state statute, because to me, it certainly didn't seem like it as I was going through and reviewing it.
Are you specifically referencing the legal reference numbers? Like the legal references at the base?
So, no, the actual, the actual credit.
Oh, gotcha.
Details don't seem to match up between our policy and what state statutes says that we need to have. Because I understand our, our credits are defined by a semester, and the state is a year, a year, a school year. But, for example, let me pull it up. So.
If they're going on years, it may not map directly then.
So, for example, um, on the state statute, it says there has to be a minimum of seven elective credits, which is a full year, but ours is a minimum of 11, but that's semesters. So if you double the seven, it should be 14.
I see the, I see the math you're doing, I'm just looking at something.
Right, so like, link, English looks fine, because it says in here four credits of language arts, so four doubled for semesters would be eight. And then there was another note in here, there's another specific that an Algebra I credit is required by the end of eighth grade, and we don't have that verbiage in ours.
So that, so the, the big highlight for me is that number seven. And section B. Minimum 11 elective, of course, credits, all right. I see a couple people researching, I just want to make sure that.
The other, yeah, the other specifics are around the science requirements. Um, we state, six credits are required, including at least two in biology, but that's it for science. And this states that we have to have three credits, which would be six again, but the, but with the math done, it would be two for biology, two for chemistry or physics, and two for an elective credit for science. So we don't list out the details on the chemistry or physics portion.
Is MSB model you're looking at based upon state minimums?
Uh, it, it says it's following high school level credits for graduation.
Okay.
The state statute would be 120B dot O two, two four, zero two four, I'm sorry. 120B dot zero two four.
Got it.
Credits, and that's the statute.
I think with regard to the elective, um, the way it's written on the MDE website is the seven elective credits, which is equivalent to 14, they don't call out their health or faiet as a separate credit, I suspect it falls into their calculation of the elective credit category.
That could be possible for the science as well, for the.
So we can go back and check this, I've already checked it with curriculum. Are we, I mean, I'm not concerned that we're not meeting the minimum requirements, but we can, if you want it worded differently as the board, we can go back and figure out what the actual discrepancy is in the verbiage, and try to make it match. I will say that the, the science one is fine, we've looked into that one, because that is the essence of it. That would be something where, again, as a board, if you want to call out more detail, you can call out more detail. Doesn't, it won't change what we do or what we require.
Director Dinos, looking at the statute.
Thank you, again, this is brought forward, and I, I'm not, didn't pull up Policy Tracker really quickly, Director Mom, but we brought this, this is brought forward on an MSBA change where Min Stat, the, has been changed to Minnesota statute section. This, this is a title change in, in the early graduation line. If, if our administration feels comfortable that this aligns, I feel comfortable that this aligns, if this goes back to policy, it's, it's going to come back. I would suggest that it comes back saying comply with state statute, and we would have nothing above and beyond state statute in our graduation requirements, and, and we take out all of the listing. Because we've come around this question so, so many times, I think for purposes of today, we're going to comply with the retitling of the Min Stat piece in the early graduation, section five, and then we will revisit the language. I would feel comfortable revisiting the notable language the next time it's around for policy review.
And that is what we'd come back with, I think we've talked about this in policy, particularly because even with the other policies, um, some of these that we're talking about tonight, we're actually going into more detail, and one of the conversations we've had at Policy Committee was to not put as much detail in there and make them more general, particularly when it's a state statute compliance. So that would be, if we do take this back, that, that would be my recommendation, is just, let's, let's not worry about it, and just put, we'll comply with state requirements.
I would say at this point, and honestly, I would probably, it looks right to me, but I would take it back and make it more generic.
Again, that's the prerogative of the board.
I'm good, I'm good either way, I'm good either way. Director Mom?
I'm just thinking, so this is a non-substantive change from MSBA. It's on our radar, and it's been discussed multiple times, even before this current board. Six thirteen house, um, if we're going to bring it back, I mean, I, I looked at, it's, it's up for another review in 2025, we'll have the programmatic reviews done at that time. There, I'm assuming, in the next two years, we'll probably be having a discussion regarding budget adjustments, and the high school day, what that looks like. Which could impact this particular policy. But to Superintendent McDowell's point is, we could just have a policy that simply says, we will comply with state statute. It could be that simple. It could be that simple.
Director Dean?
I very much appreciate your point, Director Maum. I, I want to be careful, though, I think we need to move forward with this right now, because we currently require a half a credit in our, for, per our definition, one credit or one semester extra of social studies. That, that board has made a choice that we're above and beyond state statute. I believe it, it is in our budgetary guidelines that we would consider reducing that requirement, but we have not reduced that requirement. So I am not prepared at this point to, I mean, I, if we take it back, this continues to stand, and that's fine, but this is not lightly like, oh, let's just take it back and change it. I think we need to resolve this non-substantive change now. And then, to Director Maum's point, it is probable, whether there is a realignment of the high school days' structure, it is probable that we would have a conversation about graduation requirement credits, similar to the one that we recently had. But it, it cannot be lightly made. I, I don't want somebody to send this back to policy not understanding what you're saying. What you're saying is we would be modifying our graduation requirements.
Right, Director Tate?
So I just want to be clear, I pulled this out because I wanted to make sure at a minimum, we were satisfied, where we were in line with state statute. So if we're above, I'm, I'm good with that. I just, with what, and I'm sorry, but this was towards the end of reviewing the 350-page agenda. I was not seeing enough for me to be confident that this, that our policy does cover the minimums. So I can't in good conscience vote for a policy, even if it's, you know, even if there's supposed to be minor changes, I can't vote for a policy that may not cover state statute.
No, I get you on that one, and that's why I circle back and says, yeah, just to make sure we're covering that. It looks like it's not, if it's sent back and we do whatever with it, it will still apply for now. It's not like no action means there's no policy. The policy is what it is for now, in terms of the credits required to graduate. So that doesn't change, just because of what we're talking about here. It's just a matter of whether we wanted to pass this and put it in there as policy, or we want the Policy Committee to write it differently, you know? And that's, you know, it'd still stand the whole time that's going on. It's not like there will be no policy. So, Director McDowell?
So one thing that might happen, if, is, that might be helpful, is if, when you get a chance, you go to the high school website and go to the counseling department and look at their course planning guide. Because this is where the term credits gets all messed up in all of this versus courses, right? So if you look at, if you look at a sample for your plan, there's actually inclusive of English electives, there's actually 26 places where a kid would take 26 different courses of elective. So it's just, it's a matter of complexity and how the schedule is set up. And so, but that's where I would go, so that visually, it's easier to see what's actually offered to high school students. Those that had kids in high school, you will have already experienced this. If you remember back, your kids have taken at least four electives every year, if not chosen to take a study hall. Or two. So you'd, point being, you get up to that 22, 23, 24 mark, because there's just that many slots in the day.
So, Director Duss, did you have something?
My daughter graduated with a lot more credits than were needed from a 44, so I think she graduated like 52, and those were all elective science and stuff.
Yeah, so mine.
So there weren't a lot of electives that were available.
I've got to be honest, this credit thing's a little bit new, because the same thing happened to us, though. Let's, let's try to clear the table here on this one. I need to, we're going to vote on whether or not we are going to move this forward and approve the graduation requirements or not. And then if it's not voted, then we will simply send it back to policy. And this will stand in for the time being. So, all those in favor of Policy 613, I need you to signify by saying aye, please?
What does aye rolling mean?
It's an abstain, isn't it?
Because I don't disagree with the policy, I just, just, okay. So I, I vote for the graduation with just these changes that we are making by MSBA requirements, but with the idea that this has to be a bigger conversation, like we've talked about multiple times.
Agreed, absolutely agree with that. All right, so that's 50, uh, 51, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was actually a good conversation. The credit thing, it's, it's just like at the college level, it's just daunting. That brings us to max levy limitations.
All right, for this one, I'm going to have Jen start.
Yeah, give me a little context, a little context, please.
With the, with what's going on and what this means, and hopefully we'll provide some clarification, because I did see that the presentation got out in the news a little bit, and it was a little misleading on what it actually means, because we're not, we're not asking or, or making some suggestion. It's, it's what it is based on what's called the levy certification. So hopefully we'll be able to clarify some of that.
Okay, so the levy that we're working on right now is the 2022 pay 2023 for fiscal year 2324. So as you kind of break that down, the 2022 is the year that it's completed, it's for taxes payable in 2023, and then we receive the funds in fiscal year 2324. So it's complex, we'll start there. Okay. So the Minnesota Department of Education actually calculates the maximum levy limitation for each public school district in the state. By law, the final levy approved by the board in December cannot be greater than the proposed levy, except for any adjustments that would be made by MDE or by approved voters. So in mid-November, the county will mail out notices to individual property tax owners showing their estimated taxes based on the proposed levies that are approved by school districts, cities, the county, and other taxing agencies. And then the school board will certify the district's final 2022 property tax levy after holding the truth and taxation hearing during the December 7th regular board meeting. So this next slide just shows a little bit more detail. So if you look at the last column there, the 2022 pay 2023 levy, you can see that it is a increase over our prior year. And the main factor for that is the inflationary adjustment on the voter-approved operating referendums. So we have two issuances, and both of them include an inflationary adjustment, and we'll talk through that just a little bit more. The other thing that is new in this one is the OPEB levy. So as a board, we've worked through that, and that is included in this calculation. So this is just kind of my summary, but the official MDE levy limitation and certification report was added to Board Book today. I certified it like this afternoon, and then tonight, it'll need to be signed off on by the board. So this next slide just shows a little bit more information about the inflationary adjustments. So for our current levy, we're having adjustments for the past two years. So there's really three years' worth of data included in the levy. So our final fiscal year 20, or the final adjustments are being done for fiscal year 22, which is pay 21. And then there's initial adjustments for fiscal year 23, which is the pay 22. And then the new rates are being applied to our fiscal year 24 levy. And you can kind of see, you know, the initial, the estimates at the time of setting the pay 22, so like for 2020, it was 1370, and then based on that inflationary adjustment, it goes up to 1445. So for that year, there's a change or an increase of about $74. And then for the election year 2021, it was an increase of about $145. And then 2022, 154. So all of those adjustments are hitting our levy this year. What that kind of means for us, again, is if we kind of go back to this one, is we're looking at getting about $1.5 million more than what we had in the previous year. And we'll kind of talk at the end of how that looks compared to what we projected. So just kind of following through some of that inflationary adjustment information, this is a slide that was provided by Ellers, oops, and I'm not on it, there we go, that shows what those annual inflation amounts were for the past several years. So if you look at 2011 through 2021, the average for all of those years was 1.78%. If we look at the more current information, and we just look at those three years that are kind of highlighted in yellow, you can see a 7.17, 5.66, and 2.38. So the average of those three is 5.07. So that inflationary adjustment is definitely higher than what it has been in the past. And that's not something that the district determines, that's based on information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the Minnesota Management and Budget. So it's nothing that the district has control over. I think the other thing to note is that referendum cap. So with the inflationary adjustments, that cap goes up. So for '24, that is $2,111, and our amount is $1,597. So the difference there, I know we've talked about this before as a board, the difference there is about $513 per student, that we're under the cap. When we look at this slide, the, kind of the information I'll point out is more towards the bottom, so the property value information. So right now, we're using a conservative estimate of a 15% increase when we look at the referendum market value and the net tax capacity that's used to calculate the rates. And then if you kind of look at lines 17, 18, and 19, those are the tax rates. So the tax rates are really staying pretty consistent, and in some categories, actually decreasing. And what that means is the district taxes are going to be spread over a larger tax base. So the tax impact on any particular property will really depend on its assessed value and whether that value is increasing over last year. So another, another way to say it is if, you know, there was no increase in the property value, there would be no increase in those people, in that property tax, or that property owner's taxes. There's a larger tax base now to spread it over. So this next slide just looks specifically at Dakota County, and you can see from that first year, payable year 21 to payable year 22, there was a 3.3% increase in that overall property value. And right now, according to Dakota Car, Dakota County, the preliminary information at least is a 17%. So that's where, if we kind of go back to this last slide, we're using a 15%, just to be conservative, but what Dakota County is sharing at this point is a 17% overall increase. And then this layers, we're close to the end. This slide just kind of shows how that's broken down by property classification. So the increases in Dakota County are really in the residential, industrial, and apartments. And some of them are, you know, like in a 20% increase range. So kind of what this means for us is that, you know, the fiscal year, fiscal year 2324 levy is about $1,005 higher than what we had originally projected, and that's really due to that inflationary adjustment on the voter-approved referendum. So our next step will just be kind of waiting for that budget projection model to become available, so Ellers will provide that. They have to make annual updates to it, so we should get that in October or November. At that point, we'll go through and kind of update it with all the new information. So at this point, we're kind of recommending that we do a hold on kind of the major budget adjustments for fiscal year 2324, until we've had a chance to really update that model and work through that information. We will, however, continue to look at, you know, the right sizing adjustments based on our student counts, as well as any other cost efficiencies throughout the system. So it's not that we'll put that completely on hold, we'll kind of work through those, but at this point, it just doesn't make sense to go through and make huge budget cuts if we don't need to.
Jen, so I'm clear, just want to make sure I'm clear, and everybody else is clear. So this 1.5 we're talking about is, at this point, with what's happened, well, everything you've seen, the certifications, that's the floor now, correct?
That's the what's at it?
The floor?
Yeah, so that's our max, yep.
Okay. So I think the important thing to note is that I want everybody to realize, there's still going to be a budget drill. We still have to have a budget drill, there's efficiencies we're going to identify per this slide, and we need to continue to look at that right sizing, those adjustments, and do those things in terms of being cost-effective. So just agreeing with the, that final bullet point, and just trying to drive that home so people understand what we're talking about here.
So the other thing, too, that I want to just make sure that we circle back to is, the change is nothing that the district has done, right? Then nothing happened there. We have a, a referendum market value change, we have an inflationary change that is part of the voter-approved levy. Those two things, when we put those into the calculations, create a larger revenue source for the district as a whole. That revenue source, inclusive of OPEB, has offset what we have been anticipating roughly as our deficit for the next year, which is what was going to springboard us into this month and next month, and what we've been prepping the board for, some pretty significant budget adjustments. This does not save us down the road. What it does do is it gives us a reprieve. We don't have to go into those bu- budget adjustments like we thought we would, unless as a board, you would say, we don't, we don't care that this is equalling out now, we want you to push through with budget adjustments. I wouldn't recommend that. I'm just, that, again, is a board decision, but that's where we are. From a superintendent's standpoint, this is, like, this is one of the best things you can, you can receive, is you, you don't have to take your staff and a school board through a significant budget adjustment process, at least for another 12 months to consider. However, as Jen pointed out, I really do believe we need to continue to find efficiencies in our system. I think we need to shore up things. This is the opportunity to shore stuff up, make the right decisions so that there's less to bite off when we do get to that spot, right? So if we, things like, if we, if we have classes that really probably should be considered that we don't run them because they don't get the enrollment year after year after year, we should still have that discussion. You, as a board, if we do have that, are going to get pushed back to say, why are we doing that? You just told us that we don't have to make major budget adjustments. You're going to have Jen and myself pushing you to say, this is what we were talking about, we really should make some smart moves so we have less to take care of later on. So we'll keep pushing for that, but we're not going to need to do the, the budget drill, as you mentioned, that we thought we were going to do. So it'll be one less stressor for our staff and our community, I think, coming out of, coming out of this the last two years. So that, that's great news, that's exciting, people should feel good about that.
Director Dean, and then Director Tate.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate the point that you reiterated, because I think it was inaccurately represented prior to this meeting, which is, this levy is an existing levy with a voter-approved inflationary rate in it, and everybody has looked around and seen what's been happening with property values. And that is a reflection of those two things. This was not a decision of the board to do anything differently or increase anything. This is, this is an outcome of the change in market value and inflationary component of our existing levy. To build on your second point, we are still, and this is the point that I lay awake at night and think about, is we're relying on a lot of our mental health and student support services on ESSER dollars and federal dollars, and we will be for another year. And we all, we all heard Mr. Sternow give his professional opinion about the anticipated future of needs. And, and those, as those federal dollars come to an end, that's why we have to keep our eye on, on efficiency and our conversations around how do we provide the best value to students, and, and what are the actual needs that we're going to try and meet in our public school setting. But that being said, this is, this is a relief. This is a, for, for me, to hear this. It's also a component of us making the, doing all the hard work for years leading up to being in a position to do the OPEB levy. That's a component of it, I don't want to forget about that. That, that was a lot of work on our district staff's side, and, and I think that needs to be acknowledged. And, um, and I think that needs to be acknowledged as a part of this too.
Director Tate.
Um, I just want to ask, since this is obviously my first time through this, um, what is the confidence level, say, one to five, that these numbers are stable and that this is where we expect to land?
So Jen can give, hey, Jen will give you a more conservative opinion than I will most likely. Um, so this is, I'll answer the, I'll lead into your response. One of the things that people in the public might go to that point is to say, how did you not know about this sooner? What, this, what ends up happening is we wait till the very last minute until we get to the spot where we're fairly certain this is what's going to happen. Because as we go through the budget process, you will remember Jen saying multiple times, the, the farther out we get from the actual decision, the assumptions we make, any significant change will change the whole ballgame. This is one of those anomalies that we talk about that could happen along the way that changes it. So we would not be bringing it here in front of the board if we weren't confident that this is what's going to happen. And right now it's the numbers. I mean, Jen's going to certify the numbers. Those numbers are certified. After we get the board to sign off, our certification is done after the board signs off on it today. So it's, it's there. It's happening. Now, what we don't know is to what degree the inflationary rate will stay where it's at. I don't know if it's a good lead in or not.
Well, I'll say that when I got the initial report, I had a little bit of a heart attack because it was not, you know, what we were expecting. We knew that there would be an inflationary adjustment, but we just didn't know how big that would be. So I've actually worked with MDE. I've worked with Lers. I've, you know, gone through multiple, like, um, different sessions where they, you know, go through all the numbers. So at this point, we are confident in the numbers. Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else? I will say this, just want to reemphasize that it means less of, you know, a million work sessions, but we do have to still keep in mind as we're thinking about things going forward that we'll be sitting here again this time of the year, next year, and there'll be decisions to be made. So now we're at a point though, where it's not, you know, for lack of, for the use of analogy, it's not like using a machete. Now you can use a scalpel. What do we need to look at? What do we really need seriously think at, think about, um, that we should be looking at doing something different with or handling differently? Or to, to Superintendent McDowell's point, is there something that's just so low attended over the last six, seven years in a row that we just know we've got to do something there? Because it will make it easier for next year. And we have the luxury now of sitting back and going, we can do this with a scalpel and say, you know, do these things a little more carefully and judiciously because it doesn't feel as much of an emergency, like, oh, we've got to do this, you know? And it should give us a little bit less heartache, but I do think that there's still some drills that we probably should walk through. So, um, Jen, what is the, the vote is to just approve the max, the max levy? Okay. So that's easy enough to do. I do have to wait for staff to get back to do that though. So we'll just wait one second for her and we'll get that in there. There we go. So there's been, um, have we, first and second, have we just, have we just been putting context in this whole time? Okay. I need a, I need a, I need a motion to approve the max levy in a second, please.
So move.
Second.
We have discussed, so all those in favor of the max levy, um, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Last thing on our agenda, um, other than, uh, future topics is community education license curator, coordinator, easy for me to say, contract.
All right. So, uh, this is one of our, uh, single person contracts, not part of a collective bargaining unit. And we had a couple of questions about, about that. Uh, this is actually a contract that, um, is a year late. So, uh, the only thing that we decided to change in this contract to get it up to, uh, speed was the rates. This is also a contract that, um, follows, uh, the teacher's agreement, um, which is a unique piece.
Just to interrupt for a second, we do, so this can be discussed in an open session in this particular instance?
Yep.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep. Cause it's a contract, uh, piece.
Okay.
So we, uh, we've updated the contract dates. We've updated the pay rates to reflect what they're supposed to be. Um, this will be a contract because it's as far behind as it is. That's going to be up for renewal already in June. And so that's why we just did the dates and the rates because we're going to be coming back to this and probably tweaking some other things, um, as well.
Thank you for that context. Um, I need a motion and a second to approve and we can discuss if needed.
So move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Director Tate.
Um, I have a question on page six, section five, payment of dues. It references the years 1995 and 1996. What is the, I, I don't understand what this is referring to, I guess.
So two parts to that. One, again, I just remind the board that we did not look at anything in this contract except for dates and rates. And so we did not update that.
Because it's, it's a core, it's a current contract. It's in effect.
It's in effect. The, I'm not sure why these rates and dates stayed in here. I was not here when this, uh, last, I don't believe the last time this contract was actually, um, redone, um, as part of that. So the dues though, is no different than any, any other contracts where, uh, whether it's, um, administrators, um, or supervisors, typically there's an allowance for dues in there, and that's what this is. I don't know why it has kept the whole 95, 96 school year there. But again, it wasn't something that we looked at because it wasn't what we were, as I've just shared before with contracts, we don't go through contracts from the beginning to the end when we do contracts. It's not how collective bargaining works in a school district. We have certain things we pick out. And like I shared in this case, we were looking at dates and rates and that was it. Um, and so that's why it's here.
And this will be redone next year?
It'll be done and it's back on the docket already in June.
There we go. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of the community education license curator contract, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Five, one. Please let the record reflect that. Motion passes. Okay, uh, request for future topics. I know we've got a lot already on our docket. Are there any other additional ones we need to add? There's a couple of, I'm, I'm still got under consideration already. Is there anything else we need to add? Director Tate.
Um, just like to reiterate, the, the request that I made was to have a conversation about when to go to MSBA versus our legal team and what is the follow-up with the remainder of the board?
Got that.
Two pieces.
Absolutely got that. I think that we're going to make that part of our retreat, actually. I'll get that on there for that. Director Adine.
I suspect this is also part of our retreat, but I would like us to prioritize, uh, developing a board self-evaluation tool.
That is.
I think that would go a long ways towards, um, keeping us on track.
Thank you. That is also part of the retreat as, um, already. Oh. Okay. I, I couldn't tell.
I haven't, sorry, I have a couple more requests.
Sure.
I would like the board to discuss replacing our district council, Rupp, Anderson, Squares, Walzburger, and Mace with another law firm. When I had asked this question earlier this year, I was advised that in order to make a change for the January organizational meeting, that would have to happen, that conversation would have to happen in October-ish. And then my other request, um, I would like to discuss, um, as you all know, a couple of books were brought up for review recently, and they were advised that we should keep them. However, as a board, I think that we need to have a discussion around having sexually explicit materials available for children in our libraries and in some classrooms. I was just reading a study that has been done that shows that it is, um, very detrimental to children to be exposed to this type of material. Uh, and so I think we need to have a discussion as a board about that.
Uh, Director Adine.
Um, I'm going to concede to Super.
You tell.
I'd like to add, if it's possible, I realize that's important, to the first question, if the board is going to discuss replacing a law firm, I would like part of that discussion to be that the board retains their own law firm separate from what the district administration uses for its legal offer.
I just want to clarify. So you're saying you want the board to have legal representation and the district to have separate legal representation?
That is correct.
Okay. Is that, is that common for, for that to occur or?
It has been done in districts, uh, particularly for the reasons that typically a school board does not entertain using a different legal firm than what's recommended by the district administration, because the district administration is the one that works with the legal firm on a day-to-day basis. And I would add to that, that the school board typically because of the lack of experience in a school district working with school law, does not have the expertise to decide what law firm should be used in making decisions for school law-related materials. So I would just recommend if you're going to do that, I would ask that you discuss the ability for the administration to make that decision on their own and the school board can decide who they want to retain as a legal, uh, reference group.
That's noted. I've got that down. Director Adine.
I appreciate that annotation. I would not be comfortable having a discussion about selecting a law firm different than that, uh, recommended by the administration. I'm also not comfortable having a conversation. I don't think it's necessary to have a conversation about what specific materials are available in curriculum. I think if the policy needs to be changed, then the, around curriculum review and curriculum acceptance, then that should be brought into the policy committee. It's not as, uh, topic specific. So I could not support bringing that forward as a future topic.
Director Tate.
To be clear, um, these books are not necessarily in curriculum.
The curriculum review process, curriculum is a broader term. And I also think we are now, I would consider myself at a point of order, just to be clear. And then we've moved into discussion of the topic, but the dissatisfaction is with the policy process and it should be brought into policy, if at all, um, for consideration.
Okay. So I've got it down for consideration. I'm going to try to bring this back into order here. I've got it down for consideration and then we'll circle back on it from there, on both pieces. Dr. McDowell.
I'd just like to, I'm, I'm not sure if you're going there with this, but I'm not sure we did this last time. But the, just a reminder that the original intent of having this as an item was for a board member to bring up a topic for the board as a whole to vote on whether that topic was going to be added as an agenda. It wasn't just to, I feel like the last couple of meetings, we've just brought up ideas and moved on. I don't know that we've actually, which is fine. Again, as a board, it's your prerogative, but that was the original intent was to allow for a board decision as to whether a topic was going to be moved forward.
Director Dressley.
And since we don't currently have a policy for non-curriculum materials that are available in school, I don't think that would be a bad decision to make as a board to have a policy that's similar to what, because like Becky pointed out, what I might not like, she might like, or what she might like, I might not like. You know what I mean? There need, there should be a standard so that there's no confusion about what, what is what.
So that piece, that component falls to the policy committee. That's not even something that goes on agenda then. That, that, you guys own that. You guys own that one. Okay. Yeah, so you guys own that one. So that, that's one. And then in terms, in terms of the law firm, um, we can vote on whether we want to put this on an agenda item. And I do agree with Dr. McDowell that that separates the board from the administration at that point. And then it becomes, that wedge becomes something where we'd have to have our own representation. So we'd have to consider that. So we can have it as an agenda item, something to discuss, um, that would be enclosed because now we're talking about something that has to do with the administration. We'd have to do that enclosed without the superintendent there. Just see, uh, cause how else could you do it? If you're part of the administration and we're looking at a firm outside of that. Well, I'm just saying.
We're trying to decide if we bring this topic forward. We're not trying to solve the question.
I'm trying to explain that if we, if agenda though, all these items have to be discussed. Okay. Well, then we bring us back to whether or not, I'm sorry, um, Director Ma, it's too far to my left.
For consistency purposes, because, you know, Superintendent McDowell brought up a good point, the, I thought the purpose of putting future meeting or, um, future topics on is that we're going to vote line by line. Okay.
What I'm saying though, what I'm saying though, is on this one, the, first of all, going back to the, the policy having to do with curriculum, all that, that's a policy thing. I'm saying that's not even, that's not even a vote because it's not an agenda item. It's something for policy to take on.
Well.
Or do we have to vote for policy to take it on?
Well, if, yeah. The, the, the board has to provide direction to policy, right? We don't just take an individual topic that, that gets discussed and decide we're going to do something at the policy committee. So at this point, the policy committee has not received direction, um, on the, the materials that Director Tate has, uh, concerns about. And the quest, the question about, um, selecting a different law firm, that too, the board hasn't decided if that's something we even want to go forward with, much less, um, what that would, how that would be done. So we're still at a, do we take it beyond a topic to an action?
Got it. Fair enough. Um, so Director Tate.
I would just like to add clarification to my request for the law firm review. It comes from, um, my concerns regarding their, the quality of their work.
No, I understand where it comes from. I'm just saying that in terms of an agenda item, we have to determine whether it's something we're going to discuss or not. So we have to determine on a vote which ones we're going to take on. One's a direction for the policy committee. The other one's just an agenda item where we'd even get into discussion around it. So that being said, we need to start with the, um, whether or not we'd like to direct the policy committee to take on some type of policy around curriculum. And I'm doing curriculum broadly, by the way, to Director Dean's point. Say again?
We have a policy about curriculum in a broad sense.
Then maybe needs to be reviewed. I don't know. Director Dressley.
But that policy is being used, so as sure, I'm sure you all know, there's a book, there are books that were brought forward that were questioned and community members are obviously upset that there's not a, appeal process or anything, and that's what we're responding to. So is having those, those conversations about either the policy or about the, it broadening out from just curriculum to being materials in school or whatever it may be so that that policy is actually followed accurately.
Got it. Director Adine.
So we have a policy review cycle. And, and we have a policy review cycle. So if there's a question regarding that policy, then there's a policy review cycle that it would come up, um, at that time.
Director Ma, yes.
Director Dressley, thank you for calling a spade a spade. You, it, all this Minnesota nice, like, it's great to skirt around the issue, but let's, let's call it what it is. There was an individual who was concerned about a few books within our, our schools received a response and there is no appeal. This individual wants there to be one individual in the community is concerned about these books and wants us to consider an appeal. So more than one. Okay. I retract that statement. However, there is no appeals process. So I think the question at hand is, are we going to have the policy committee take a look at non-curriculum items, in particular with the book considerations? When there's a book, there's a policy in a, or there's a procedure to how, uh, to have that looked at, um, and then a response is given, um, and, but there is no appeals process. I would have to dig into it a little bit further to see if there's an affiliated policy. I want to say there is, but I'm not confident in that answer. But thank you for calling it what it is. That's, that's what we're actually talking about at this point. I, correct me if I'm wrong though.
So what we're doing is voting to direct the policy committee to look into a potential appeals. Books appeals process. That's what we'd be doing, or voting on. Director Tate.
I just wanted to make the comment that when Director Dressley and I were elected, we were under the impression, and I'm going to say this was clearly communicated to us, that we needed to remove ourselves from the curriculum advisory committee, because if anything, if an appeal made it to the board, we would want to have the right to vote at that time. So what is going on right now is a bit of a disconnect from what was communicated. So I think that there needs to be clarity, and, and just want to emphasize that.
Dr. McDowell.
All right. So I'll try to make, I'll try to simplify it. The question that is on the table is not about curriculum. It is about reviewing materials slash textbooks. We currently have a policy in place that allows for that to happen to a certain spot on the administrative side. What, the appeal that is not in place in Hastings currently, is for that decision to come back to the board. That's what you're really wrestling with. This is not about whether or not board members should be sitting on curriculum, the curriculum advisory committee. That's a whole different, bigger thing than what we're talking about here, which does apply because the school board currently, based on policy and statute, is in a position to approve curriculum and/or initial materials of curriculum when we go through curriculum review processes. Because we have new board members, I understand that that's not necessarily, it's just going to take a while to see how it all fits together. But this really is a simple question. Do you, as a board, want to entertain adding an appeals process to your instructional and/or book reviews to the policy that you have currently? Because that's, it, it isn't that it's not being followed. It was followed. That's what's irritating people. It's followed, and they didn't get the answer they wanted. That's the spade in the room. Right? So, and that's fine if you do, but that's really all the more difficult this is. Do you want the policy committee to relook at that policy and the adjoining policy to see if you want to, to change the, the ending of that process, which currently does not allow for a review, an appeal to come to the school board? That, that's more difficult than it is.
Anything else? Okay, then we are specifically going to vote on adding this, Director Tate.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you for that summary, because that makes me think that, no, this, there's actually two parts to this. One is the process for sure, but the other piece is, the fact is that this entire board is responsible for curriculum and the materials that are available in the district, and I am very concerned about having sexually explicit materials available for children to check out without parental consent. And I have read every federal law and state law that there is regarding this because of my concern. And I am, I am confident at this point that we are, because we are a school, we are not legally in any trouble. However, I still am opposed to having these materials freely available to students. So it's a two-part issue with us having responsibility for curriculum, and also the process for review.
Thank you for that comment, Director Dressley. All right, all that being said, in order to even put this on the agenda and have this conversation, in order to direct the policy committee to look at this, we have to vote on it. So that's what we're going to do now. I need to know, of all are in favor of directing the policy committee to look at this and the adjoining piece, it would be an appeal process around what we currently have in terms of book review. It's not curriculum, per se. It's adjacent to curriculum, but it's actual book review piece. Oh, I'll get to that in a second. Okay. So I actually need a first and a second first. I'm sorry, we're discussing this as an agenda item. So I do need a first and a second. Thank you.
I move to have the policy committee reconsider an additional process for appeal regarding curriculum and also other supplemental materials, library books, whatever they are. Have a look at those policies.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to that, because it's, would be Rachel Larson that would do that, not necessarily the policy committee. I don't know if that's something... We wouldn't be the ones, we wouldn't be the ones that were doing the research or anything on it as a policy committee, correct? Okay. Yeah.
It's a team.
So that we have a, so is that a second?
I seconded.
So we have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The vote's three to three. So the motion fails. The other piece is an agenda item to discuss replacement of a law firm. So we need to know if we will want, even want to have this on the agenda to discuss. I need a first and a second.
So move. Seconded.
All right, with a first and a second, I need a vote on those in favor of looking at this. Please, I'm sorry, absolutely, Director Beisel.
Is there a reason? Is there, I mean, do you have specific information or like facts about this? Otherwise, if we just don't like somebody, or we have heard, I want, I want the facts. I don't want to hear, I heard you didn't like them, or I heard they didn't do their job. So we need to have evident facts before, I feel like we have to even put this to a vote.
And I think that's what would, well, getting into that gets into an agenda item. They're in a discussion that was off, not part of our agenda for tonight. So we'd have to say, yeah, fine, we'll have it on an agenda item for a meeting, and then we would get into the types of things we're talking about, if I'm addressing this continuum correctly. I don't know that we discuss it right now. We can put it on a work session too, as a part of an agenda item, and do it that way, if that's what you wanted to do. But now is not the time to get into it. No, I think it's absolutely fair. I think it's absolutely fair. Director Tate.
Can I just confirm? Yes, I have, I have multiple instances of backing up my concern.
Okay. So the question is handed, do we, do we add it to the agenda for a work session? And so, all in favor of adding it as an agenda item to one of our future work sessions, please signify by saying aye. Okay. Those opposed? Vote's three to three. The motion fails. Director Dressley.
So then are, are we going back to vote on the previous one that we hadn't voted on before about the, okay, okay.
Which one are we talking about?
The communication follow-up to the board regarding legal and MSBA correspondence, that first one that Director Tate brought up? To have, to add that as, I mean, that was an add-on from, from last month's.
Yes, I remember that. So it was a communication, that was to add to the agenda item. That was, that we're going to add to potentially the retreat, correct? Am I on the right one? Okay. So to rephrase, I'm probably not going to phrase it exactly the right way, Director Tate, but it's basically a follow-up on procedures, or how, not so much a procedure, but how we go about utilizing MSBA policies and how we do follow-up to ensure that it's in compliance, or we're in compliance with what we need to have for our policies. Is that close?
I make, I make a motion for the board to discuss the process for determining when we consult with legal versus MSBA, and the, the communication process that is followed to ensure that the rest of the board is informed.
Got it. Okay, do we have a second on that?
Seconded.
All of us in favor of adding this as an agenda item? Yeah, but it's still, it's an agenda item for a future meeting. It's still a future meeting. Yeah. Those opposed? Motion passes. Five more. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you'd throw your hand up, Becky. Are you for or against? Okay, it's four to. Thank you. All right. Let me, this, Director Tate.
There was one more. That was the request for us to have a board discussion regarding specifically sexually explicit materials in our schools. Because as a reminder, we do work for this community, and if, if people haven't seen that book that was asked to be reviewed, it is quite offensive, and it's concerning to me that it is available for children without any parental consent whatsoever. And I think that we need to have the discussion as a board to, to talk about how we, how we approach these items. Because here's, here's, here's where this is leading. I am concerned about the erosion of parent trust in our schools. And we have talked about what are the reasons that parents are pulling their kids? Why are they homeschooling? I mean, this is going on all over the country, and homeschooling is exploding because of an erosion of trust in the system. And frankly, this is one of the reasons, the sexualization of children that is going on right now, that many, many, many people are opposed to. We can't just ignore it. We work for this community. We report to them.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go, nope, you're good. Okay, Director McDowell. Dr. McDowell.
I have to say this this way. What you just shared is your opinion, and you're trying to create in front of the cameras a causation, which you cannot, because you don't have the data to back it up, to suggest that sexually explicit materials in Hastings is the reason that all of our kids are homeschooling. So just be careful about making statements like that, is all I would put out there, because that, that isn't, there is no data that suggests, we had homeschool, we've had homeschool kids for a long time. You're going to find out in October that we've gotten kids back. So I just, I don't want people to get the wrong impression that A automatically leads to B, because that's not the case. I'm not trying to take away the passion about what you're trying to get to, but we got to be careful that we're not suggesting that there's a causation happening in Hastings right now because of X.
Director Beisel.
I've just been brainstorming. So some community members may find this a fun, some, some other community members don't. So, but like you said, we work for all. Is there a way that parents can write a letter and that if it's explicit or has something level on the books, can they just send that into the media center? That, do you have to call parents to check out this book, or have to have a written letter that it's okay to check out this graphic material? I mean, instead of having this discussion, because some, like I said, we're for all. So some groups may be offensive by this, but some groups may be offensive by a zombie book, you know? So is there a way to just make this process a lot easier?
Director Ma.
I don't recall, was the decision regarding the, the books in question, I know they, they went to review, was that decision communicated to the entire board? And if not, because I wonder if that would clarify any miscommunication, any, any issues that we are having here. But we have to be very careful with our words. We represent everybody. And I, I know, and I understand the concern, but I know there are also checks and balances that, to ensure that there's age-appropriate materials available to our children. So, you know, to Director Beisel's point, it, the word, I don't want, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, so I'm not even going to say it. But the subjectivity, you know, it may, it may be that I want my child to, to understand what they're going through right now, and that book is something that they can relate to. And so like, we kind of go down the slippery slope if we're taking a look at three books, and then where does it stop? So I understand your concern, Director Tate. I just, we have to be very cautious and, and understand too, that there is not a direct correlation that we have seen.
Director Dressley.
I would like to echo what Director Beisel said, and that if parents wanted to opt out, who are we to say that they couldn't? So I don't think that that, I think that parents should be allowed to opt out if that's their, if that's their choice. Not to say that it can't be available for the kids whose parents want that to be available, but if parents want them to opt out, why wouldn't we allow that?
Director Dean.
So to be clear, we are currently having the discussion we have yet to decide if we're going to have. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that. Secondly, while these feel like fabulous ideas from a table full of non-educators as to how to approach, non-educators and non-librarians, on how to approach having materials available to students, I don't believe anybody at this table, with the possible exception of Dr. McDowell, is aware of what best practice is. And I would hesitate to brainstorm with this group, all the way down to the specifics of optimization, of like, or of operation, excuse me.
So what is the question? The discussion, then, what we need to determine then, to your point, Director Dean, because I don't want to like get down the rabbit hole tonight. Is this something that we want to discuss in a future meeting? Do we want to bring in experts to discuss it with us? Do we want to try to find some resolution to this process that'll help us? When future things come up, because it's going to come up again, this won't be the last time. And so if we can do, if we, if we can do something of a preemptive nature, some way to get ahead of it, I'm ahead, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm in favor of trying to get ahead of it, to try to find some sort of win-win. But I don't want to get into the diesel of how we do that, because you're right, we don't have all the experts in front of us. But it also means that we have to determine whether we want to discuss it at a future meeting. Go ahead, Director Dean.
I'd like to, at this time, keep it on a back burner, because what we don't have is we don't have enrollment data for this year. So we, we don't have any reason to believe that the claim being made is accurate. We have a system of parental surveys. I don't think we've, I think we should react to parent surveys, student surveys, staff surveys that say where our gaps are, and this is, this has not been identified as a concern to this point. We have a limited base of resources, not financial, although financial is part of it, but administrative brain power and time. And I want our administrative brain power and time to be working on our identified issues coming out of student and parent surveys, and how we can, in a secondary program review, and how we continue to make our district stronger, and not react to a loud, what, what would appear to be at this time, small number.
I am discounting the, the nexus or not nexus between the enrollment numbers and this. I am really trying to focus on this issue, not the nexus right now, because that could easily be flawed. I'm looking at, if there's something that's disturbing to a large enough grouping of the town, then I'm willing to say, okay. Then are there things out there that we as a board can look at to try to alleviate that angst? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that I have the answer. I'm not saying, I'm saying that is there something out there that would alleviate that angst or not? And is that something that's worth a conversation in a future meeting or not? Not an open one, would be a work session, yes.
I agree with that, because I think we got to find a way to work for everyone in the community, not just some in the community.
So, Director Dean.
I would just like to point out that one of our core values is voice and choice.
Director Dressley.
But saying it and practicing it, I think that this would be established, or showing that we're practicing it as well as just saying it.
Director Tate?
One more comment, then I'm done.
Sure.
I mean, this goes back to our conversation regarding an ethics policy tonight, right? What, what is, what is viewed as unethical? And this is where we're getting into this stuff. Many people are going to view this particular book and probably others that are out there as unethical in sharing it with children. So we need to balance that again, and, and try to satisfy everyone in this.
I am willing to put it out there and to vote and see if we can, you know, discuss this, and find some way to discuss this. You probably have to have the right people in the room to discuss it at a work session. But I don't think it's undoable. Again, if it's going to be something that's going to alleviate angst. So we need to have a first and a second on the motion that we add as an agenda item, a discussion in terms of how we deal going forward with books that maybe, you know, a certain percentage of our public may disagree with or not want their child to have. I'm not saying, I'm not talking about taking them out or having, I'm not, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about access to them, how the access to them is handled. That'd probably end up being a policy ultimately, but we could start a conversation. So I will move for that. I need a second, then we need to vote.
Second.
Dr. McDowell?
You've already voted down, having a conversation about what books will or what, what the process is going to be about books being in. I think that what I heard, it's the same, it's the same thing. That wasn't what your motion was, though. Your motion was about explicit material in schools.
Correct.
As a generalization.
Yes. How do we, how do we as a school board want to handle explicit materials in our buildings and protecting the children who want their, whose parents want them protected from this?
You said it better than me.
Seconded.
So all those in favor of adding this as an agenda item and a work session, please signify by saying aye. Director Beisel?
Just to clarify, so if we're going to have this discussion, we need legal or we need an expert, because none of us are experts.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
So only agreeable if we have the proper people.
We will bring in somebody for the work session-
Yes.
That know about such things.
That has to be, otherwise, yeah.
We'll ask Dr. McDowell to help line up people to help with that discussion, absolutely 100%. That being said, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Vote's four to two. Motion passes. So we'll get that added. I'm guessing it's going to probably be at the, I'm guessing it's probably going to be at the retreat. Future meetings are available.
We have one more, Eddie. Oh, no.
No, we don't. Oh, no worries. No, you're supposed to be keeping me on track, so I appreciate that. Future meetings, they are on, out on Board Book. So we have a regular work session, it looks like scheduled for the 12th. And then we have a regular board meet on the 26th. I'm sorry? The 12th? I'm assuming so. Okay, we can talk about that. Other than that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.